Good evening. Oh my God, rambling. Alrighty. I call to order the January 18th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. I'll begin with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash Tongva Fernandino Tatabaim and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. Ms. Abasta, might I call on you to lead us in the pledge? And for those that are able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abasta. Ms. Quintero, please take the roll call at this time.
Member Ferguson. Member Ferguson is absent today. Member Tabit.
Present.
Clerk Ponser Kamkar.
Present.
Vice President Aga Khanian.
Present.
President Weisberg.
Present. Thank you so much. Reporting on closed session, we had one item. Do I just read it out? The notice of, the notice of, okay. The notice of proposed termination for cause for employee number CL 0019-23. There were four I's and one absent. Should I read out the names? Ms. Ponser Kamkar, I. Ms. Tabit, I. Dr. Aga Khanian, I. Dr. Weisberg, I. Moving on to item six, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments? Dr. Paramo.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to pull 11H and 11J.
Thank you. We will bring those back another time. Okay. Item for future agendas. I have one. I would like us to revisit a reorganization of the governance committees to talk about what we would like them to look like and make adjustments. Anybody else have items for future agenda? Okay. We'll move on to item 8A from reports for the board. Our fabulous student representatives will begin with Ms. Paris Tesfu from John Burrows High School.
Good evening. Good evening, President Emily Weisberg, distinguished school board members, Superintendent John Paramo, district staff, members of the community. My name is Paris Tesfu, President of John Burrows High School, and I'm here to give my report on January 18th, 2024. We got back to school on the 8th, and we're still adjusting to coming back to school after the winter break, but I'm going to start with the arts for right now. The Burbank Human Relations Council held their Martin Luther King Junior Day Breakfast Event on Monday, and three students from JBHS, Jalen Turner, Gisele Cashian, and myself participated by submitting art to pay tribute to him and the inspiration that he has left us. The VMA is holding their annual Pop Show Unplugged show at the Colony Theater at 5:30 and 7:45. General tickets are $15, so come out and support our talented choirs and performers. Next, sharing a little bit about what ASB has been doing lately. We just held our annual Winter Blood Drive, and we're so thankful for all the donations. The Winter Pep Rally is on February 1st, and the classes are hard at work getting their decorations and giveaways ready. We are very excited for a pep rally filled with games and performances to cheer on our basketball team against Burbank. Today, the Student Outreach Committee held an informational meeting and discussion for the student body and Black community at JBHS to hold a discussion on what a Black culture event could look like for Black History Month. We're still in the works collaborating with clubs and organizations on campus to create an event that can explore a multitude of cultures that are often ignored. Ending with sports news, the girls' water polo team went against Pasadena today, and the girls' varsity basketball team played against Arcadia 54 to 9, and both JV and varsity will play against Pasadena tomorrow in the big gym at 3:45 and 5:15. The girls' and boys' soccer is also playing against Pasadena tomorrow, girls at Pasadena and boys at home. Good luck to all of our teams, and if you have any comments or...
And I apologize, I missed the dates of Pop Show. Could you say them again?
Oh, the Pop Show Unplugged show is this, oh, I didn't write it out.
I'll figure, I'll find out.
It's this Saturday.
This Saturday.
At the Colony Theater. Pop Show is later, so I'll say that.
Oh, Unplugged is this weekend, Pop Show is later.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Could you keep us posted about what Black Student Union is planning so that hopefully we can attend, because that sounds wonderful?
Of course, yeah, we're still in the works. We don't have any...
No pressure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Quintero, let us know that our fabulous student representative from Monterey has graduated, which is wonderful news. So congratulations to Isabella. We wish her the best of luck, and we know that Principal Weaver is looking to find us a fabulous new student representative who will hopefully be joining us soon. Without further ado, I'll introduce our fabulous student rep from Burbank High School, Andronik Bilbulian.
Good evening, Board President Weisberg, distinguished board members, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and members of the Burbank community. My name is Andronik Bilbulian, and it is with pleasure that I provide a report this evening on all previous, current, and future Burbank High activities. We started off the new year with a new system at Burbank High School. Students can now make digital incident reports using the link from our website or the QR codes posted around campus. Students can now make reports from anywhere on campus or at home. In addition to this, PTSA will be hosting a meeting in the BHS library on February 7th. All are welcome to join. In regards to our performing arts, on January 28th, AMA will be hosting a clothing and shoe drive fundraiser at Burbank High School. The time will be announced soon. Vocal and, yeah, vocal and instrumental groups from Burrows and Burbank High School will be hosting a collaborative performance on January 27th in the Wolfson Auditorium at Burbank High. In sports news, our basketball and soccer programs will be going up against Arcadia High School tomorrow. Next Tuesday, January 23rd, girls' water polo will be playing against Burrows at Burrows High School, and the big basketball game between Burbank High and Burrows will be on Thursday, February 1st in our main gym. Finally, January makes up for a very busy month for ASB. With all the sports games and rally being in the same period, we have been making lots of posters. We try our best to attend all sports events and show our support to all of our sports programs. We will be hosting our second pep rally of the year on February 1st to boost school spirit and honor our winter sports teams. The week of the rally will consist of five spirit days and lunch activities. The rally theme and spirit days have been created and will be announced next week, and I can take questions or clarifications.
Your spirit weeks are when you get them. Thank you very much. Arguably the best part of our meeting. It truly. Okay, so we are going to move on and talk briefly about a very important person for whom we will be adjourning tonight's meeting. I believe that we have a PowerPoint. So on, was it December 20? At the end of December, Dr. Aga Khanian's amazing father passed away and wanted to share a little bit about this amazing man who helped raise this amazing human who has served Burbank unified for such a long time. And please correct my pronunciations, please, please, please. So Edik Agakani was born to Sarsala and Satanik Agakani on April 4th, 1941, in the city of Azna in Iran's Araq region. Edik was the eldest son in a family of nine siblings. Growing up, he assumed a significant role as the elder brother in his family, marking his lifelong journey of responsibility, leadership, and a deep sense of care for his younger siblings. From a young age, he showed remarkable academic progress and a thirst for knowledge. That is why he was sent to Tehran's Kusesh Armenian School, where he graduated in 1960, then continued his academic journey, graduating with an accounting degree from Tehran's Accounting Institute, becoming the first man in his family to earn a degree in higher education. After earning his degree, he started to work as an accountant for the Coca-Cola Corporation. After a brief period, he was promoted to the head of accounting. In 1963, he met and married his wife, hold on, I wrote it down, Haikui Kešashian. They had two children together, a daughter Nora and a son Armand. After the birth of his daughter Nora, Edik decided to go back to school to provide a better life for his family. He was accepted into the Industrial Accounting Program at Tehran University. His pursuit of higher education was difficult, as he had to provide for his family by working long hours and attending school. He would drop Nora off at kindergarten and head to university. This became their daily routine until he graduated. After graduating from Tehran University, he moved with his family to the city of Kormashar and worked as the chief financial officer at Kormashar's Coca-Cola factory. He lived in Kormashar for eight years, becoming an active participant in the Armenian community and playing a key role in establishing the Armenian School of Khorshamar. He was also a big supporter of Abadan Armenian School and the Armenian Church of Serb Karapet. As the Iraq War, Iran War began, Edik moved his family to Tehran. Facing the realities of war and wanting the best for his family, he decided to move to Germany as a refugee, joining his wife and son Armon and leaving everything he had worked so hard to create. After one and a half year stop in Germany, in 1987, Edik, Haikui, and Armand moved to the United States and reunited with Nora in Glendale, California. Edik continued to work hard as an accountant for Western Waste Company to support his family in the United States. His encyclopedic knowledge wasn't just about facts and figures, it reflected his deep love for understanding the world. Whether it was science, literature, history, or any other subject, Edik approached each topic with a sense of wonder and a desire to explore its nuances. His intellectual pursuits enriched not only his life, but also the lives of those fortunate enough to engage in discussions with him. Edik carried the lessons of his early responsibilities into his personal and professional endeavors, demonstrating a strong work ethic, determination, and the ability to take on leadership roles with grace and confidence. His sense of responsibility shaped him into a reliable and dependable individual within his family, friends, and in his community. His love extended well beyond his immediate family. His large circle of friends was a testament to his warm and welcoming personality. He had a unique ability to forge strong lifelong bonds with people from all walks of life. His friends and family knew they could count on him for advice and unwavering support. Furthermore, Edik was a true outdoorsman. His love for fishing and hunting became evident as he spent countless hours with his family and friends, sharing the art of patience, appreciation for nature, and the thrill of the chase. Throughout his life, he exhibited a passion for camaraderie and the simple joys of life, particularly through his love for playing gin rummy and backgammon. For Edik, the moments spent playing gin rummy and backgammon were not just about the games themselves, but a reflection of his character, his love for togetherness, his appreciation for the simple pleasures of life, and his ability to create a warm and inviting atmosphere for those he held dear. After a long period of illness, Edik Agakani passed away on December 25th, 2023, in Glendale, California. He is survived by his wife, Haikui, two children, and grandchildren, Monte and Arme. Edik's legacy lives on in the hearts of all fortunate enough to be touched by his love. A loving father, husband, a generous friend, and a beloved community member, his unwavering love for friends, family, and community continues to inspire us to cherish our relationships and hold our loved ones close, just as he did throughout his remarkable life.
First of all, I want to thank my colleagues and members of the school district who showed up to my dad's funeral honoring his memory. I also want to thank my former colleague, school board member Larry Applebaum. Thank you, Larry, for being there. My father was someone who cared deeply about education. He would always carry an encyclopedia around, in English and Farsi, and you couldn't argue with him. If it was something scientifically, he would just come back. To a point where there was an Armenian show where you call in for answers, they blocked every number. So every time I went over, he'll take my cellphone, and that number got me. I think when his brothers passed away young and his friends, I think that broke his heart. I think that was the most difficult thing for him, losing his friends and brothers. And I think to my father, friendship was very important. Sometimes people ask me why I add so much value to friendship. When someone, when I call him a brother, sister, that means the world to me. It's the way I was raised. Unfortunately, none of his friends are around anymore, and he's up there now with them in a better place. But he also loved my mom dearly. This would have been their 60th anniversary. But again, lesson taken from my father for all of us here is, value your family, value your friends. One positive thing that came out of this was seeing our family for two, three weeks still coming and visiting my mom. I'm blessed with a big family. I have nine on my dad's side and eight on my mom's side. But it's more difficult now, as I'm getting to an age where I see a lot of our loved ones pass. So for our young listeners and students, value your family and your parents. You never know, but also remember, what matters at the end is the love of the family. Thank you for all of our friends and individuals out there. It was a beautiful funeral, but it's difficult to see my dad gone. It's difficult, very difficult. Thank you very much for honoring my father.
We're going to move on to item nine, request to address the board. An individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item by completing a white request card and turning it in to Ms. Quintero. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. Any individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within the jurisdiction during one of the three public comment sections. We do have one virtual public speaker. No, we didn't, we did, we don't. Good day. We did, and we now we don't. Because this evening, we have a few public comment cards. We had a request to condense, and if the rest of the board is agreeable to that, I would like to do that. We have a total of four. Okay. So so we are going to condense this evening's public comment into one period. We're not always able to do that, but when we have a small number of speakers, it's a wonderful chance to give people an opportunity to speak and then hopefully have the rest of their evening. Let's see. Okay, so we have, as I said, four cards. The first card I have is Mr. Josh Notham. Is that right? Nice to see you again.
So you remember me? That's awesome. Should I start?
Yes, whenever you're ready, begin, and that's when she'll start the timer.
Okay, great. So, yes, I'm Josh Notham from ILA. I spoke to you in December, so yeah, I am here to follow up on comments I made at December's school board meeting and address a specific point on the agenda, that of the governor's recent budget release. You will remember me as a Burbank USD teacher who also teaches at ILA. I feel hopeful that with Governor Newsom's latest proclamation, severe cuts to probationary faculty will not have to occur. According to an LA Times article published on January 10th of this year, it was reported that Governor Newsom will not make cuts to K-12 operating budgets. In fact, the LA Times reported that funding will only decrease about $8 per student, hardly an amount to justify the potential termination of 29 teachers. I've also spoken to colleagues and indeed addressed BTA leadership this, just this evening, about the specific number of teachers, 29, that you plan on letting go at the end of the school year. Not one of those teachers received communication that in exchange for a 3.5% salary increase, we would willingly hand over the livelihoods of 29 teachers. I believe with the news that no major state budget cuts are coming to K-12 education, we can move forward without letting any of our teachers go. I am compelled to remind you of what a citizen said at the last LCAP meeting. She said that Burbank is renowned for its schools. We pay more for our homes, we pay more for our rent to live here just because of these schools. It is the teachers who embark on a journey of learning, guidance, and support every year who make this school district the best in LA County. Again, I'm speaking here tonight because I'm fighting for my job and jobs with 29 other teachers. With the news that drastic cuts won't be made to the state K-12 budget, I think we can save many BUSD teachers, including those of us at ILA. ILA has provided a space for me to recharge and rededicate myself to this profession, so I continue to serve my school, my students, and, most importantly, my community in the best possible way. If you move forward with these cuts, just to remind you, I will be one of the teachers that would lose their livelihood as a direct result of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Dr. Tom Crowther.
Good evening, members of the board and members of the cabinet, and Dr. Aga Khanian, I'm sorry for your loss. Condolences here in our thoughts. As you know, my name is Tom Crowther. I'm a former BUSD principal and a longtime Burbank resident, and currently I'm the director for curriculum and instruction for a charter network in Los Angeles. I have two children in BUSD, including my youngest, who is a current sixth grader at Deloris Huerta Middle School in the dual-language immersion program. And I'm here this evening to address the agenda item 11D, the first read of the dual-language immersion master plan. Do want to stress, certainly not about the hard-working teachers at Huerta, who both my kids have had, nor the principal, who I think's amazing, and certainly not about the amazing coordinator, Jen, who works so hard, but the plan itself and the committee and the process that we went through last year. I was a parent member of the committee all of last year, although the lens I brought to the committee was one of former principals of Toll Middle School in Glendale. The school had three dual-language programs when I started there and five by the time I left, four years later. The Spanish program was by far the largest, longest established, and in many ways a model of what a middle-school dual-language immersion program could be. And so summarizing that experience in GUSD, students had the opportunity to take two classes in the target language while still maintaining their elective. They held celebrations around Hispanic Heritage Month, Dia de los Muertos, other holidays, attended field trips in a lesson quarterly, had a relationship with the Spanish consulate, took the DELA exam, certifying proficiency in the target language prior to promotion, hosted parent evenings that engaged them as the unique school program that it was. Presently, none of these opportunities exist in the middle schools in BUSD. The program, for lack of a better word, fizzles near the end after kids and families have invested so much in learning the language. And when my son started middle school, we had to decide whether we would continue to focus on that language acquisition or pursue one of his passions, music. He had been in the school musical at McKinley every year, including the lead role last year, and we ultimately decided to put him in Huerta's amazing choir. So what this means is he does not take the language arts elective and only pursues Spanish through social studies class. And respectfully, he does not need to learn how to say the Phoenicians or Mesopotamia in Spanish, he needs that immersion in the conversational language, which the research clearly suggests that a 33% maintenance model is a best practice. So anecdotally, it's clear this year, his language has regressed since starting middle school. The data that we saw as a member of the committee suggested that this is somewhat typical, and the current program in the school day does not allow him or the students in the program. It does them a disservice. The plan that we just revised, the original draft document showed a framework for a seven-period schedule, which was struck in the version that you're going to first read this evening. The committee was tasked mostly with copy editing and rubber stamping, a continuation of the current model, one which we know isn't fully working. Although there was space afforded for the conversation and questions, there were a lot of things left unanswered, and this is consistent with a lot of the collaboration that my wife and I have participated in over the years as parents, and I'm really hopeful that this will, that this will change. I'm aware that one board member has a child in the program, and I also have heard Dr. Aga Khanian speak many times, very proudly, about speaking multiple languages and how it's benefited him and his desire to see these programs thrive in Burbank. So my ask tonight is that you give direction to keep exploring ways to improve that current school model. Transitions and changes in leadership and attrition, they create opportunities. So I know our assistant, new assistant, Sue, Dr. Jung, from her time in Glendale. I'm optimistic about the future in that department. I know she knows the power of a strong DLI program. We're also realistic about the cost, and so it's my understanding that the zero period will now be an option for the middle school, provided you can find a teacher as early as next year, which is awesome. I would reiterate that ideally a zero period would be accompanied by looking at that bell schedule and the start time for middle schoolers, because my son is a fourth and fifth grader, began at 8:40, and now he's starting at 8:00 AM, and then when he hits high school, he's going to start at 8:30 again. It doesn't make sense, and I've been told that some parents appreciate the staggered time for drop-off, but I'm wondering which parents you spoke to, who's been surveyed, who's been asked, because I know that I have not. And so I encourage you to get creative like this. These are, these are indeed solutions, and of course, it would benefit the influx of ELD students with MirCAP that Huerta has picked up. So it's a solution, not just for the DLI kids, but the English language learners as well. If folks are worried about what moving the bell schedule back would do to the end time, I remind you that although you have contract minutes to be mindful of, you're thousands of minutes over the middle school required minutes by the state, so you could still end at 3 o'clock. And so in closing, I just ask for a real conversation, one that seeks solutions, is creative, and keeps the students at the center. And I know that given the fiscal uncertainty, the doomsday predictions of enrollment over the next 10 years that the leader just forecasted, you have a lot of tough decisions on your hands, and it's going to require some outside-the-box thinking. So let's do it. Thank you for your time and looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Crowther. Next up, we have Schlossman. Next up, we have Schlossman, followed by Ms. Diana Abosta. You have five minutes, sir.
I'm expecting eight minutes because I didn't get a chance to turn in a blue card.
I'll continue the previous president's, which is that you have five minutes, and if I have to warn you more than once, we're going to ask you to leave.
Call the police right now because I've got eight fucking minutes.
Call the police, please. Mr. Cantwell, Dr. Paramo, thank you.
Ms. Weisberg, you're a fraud, and you're a discriminatory person, and you don't have a level playing field. I talked about this very subject at the last meeting. I said, can we combine it? And who was it who said no? Was it you, Ms. PK? Somebody said, no, we're not going to do it for you. But for one of your friends, you do it. All I ask for is a level playing field. It is not too much to ask, to know what to expect, to follow the agenda. You know, you push and you push and you push. It's not right. Is that a good example? Okay. Dr. Agaganyan, please accept my condolences. It's not easy, and I know. Ms. Weisberg, I talked to these two students. I'm talking about money right now, these two student representatives. I asked them simple questions. Do you know what an amortization schedule is? And they didn't. Do you know how compound interest works? They don't. And we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in a future bond. It could be up to 1.5 billion if you read the Perkins Eastman report, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit here. But these are the people that you're saddling with this kind of debt. I'm not going to live to pay it if you're able to pass anything, but these youngsters are, and my children are, and I'm concerned about what you're doing to the populace of this city. It's horrible mismanagement, and it's gone on for years. And I've stood here and I said, think about it. Think about the decisions you're making. And there's even an item on tonight's agenda, 11F, lead teachers, and you're going to spend a bunch of money for that, and it does not need to be spent. Put that money where it needs to go, to fix our schools, instead of coming to the populace, to the voters, and asking for more money, time and time again. Show us you know what you're doing and how to manage like the rest of us do. Level 1A priority. You know, you've been talking to us for about a year about leaky roofs and leaky air conditioners, and air conditioners is not even on level 1A priority, and fixing roofs is at the bottom of the list. You've been misleading us. You've been disingenuous to us. And that's a polite word for calling you a liar, which I certainly am. Why no mention of Horace Mann in the report? We paid for it. I read the report. I didn't see one mention of it. Why is more than half of this report boilerplate building standards? Is that what we're paying over $500,000 for? We've been hoodwinked. No mention of existing lead paint or asbestos, if there is any. I'm sure there is in our older schools. They can't even give us an articulate, a good guess. From 111 million to 148 million? It's a margin of $37 million. Are you kidding me? Why does it talk about race and ethnicity? What does that have to do with our schools needing repair? Why is that in there? That's what we paid for? Seven-year decline in enrollment? Yeah, because they're sick of your policies, and they go to parochial schools, charter schools, and homeschooling. They can't wait to get away from you and your policies. No mention of ADUs in the report and the potential for extra students coming our way. It lists all the students we're going to lose, almost 555 at boroughs in the coming years. What we should be talking about is what schools will be closed and how to reduce our expenditures. According to the projections, almost 2,500 students are not going to be here in the future. Now, I want my three minutes. I'm entitled to it. Yes, it's on the agenda. You're combining it. That's eight minutes. That's the way Ferguson did it. He gave eight minutes. And you're so stinky. When you, when parents come here, Ms. Weisberg, I'm talking about you individually. When parents come here and they have to leave because they have obligations at home, maybe they got to help with their homework, or help, or fix dinner, or do the laundry, you ridicule them for leaving, and I'm sick of it, Ms. Weisberg. It's not right. People have obligations that you know nothing about. All you know about is how to open a can of cat food. That's your obligation. I want to talk about malfeasance.
Sir, your mic is off and your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Abosta, I believe that you are next, unless I see somebody else, you are our final card for public comment. I'm sorry.
Good evening, President Weisberg. Sorry. It's okay. Good evening, President Weisberg, members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, members of the district, our student members and community. My name is Diana Bass, and I'm here as an at-large board member of the Burbank Human Rights Council. On Monday, January 15th, the BHRC hosted the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast at the VFW Hall on Magnolia Boulevard. We want to thank Dr. Agaganyan for being present and representing and helping with the scouts. Assemblyman Laura Friedman and Senator Anthony Portantino also attended and spoke on the significance of this event. Mayor Nick Schultz read a very stirring proclamation to honor the day, and Senator Carol Manjivar also spoke about her story as an immigrant and her desire to serve all in the community. She also brought beautiful certificates of recognition to give to our students who participated in this event. The Homonima Burbank Cipan Scouts began the program by presenting the flags and leading us in the pledge. Mané Shabazian, a Burbank High student, is the leader. This was followed by the Dolores Huerta Middle School Madrigals, who sang the Star-Spangled Banner beautifully, which is not easy to do, under the direction of their choir teacher, Judy Domroy. Next, we were pleased to have an inspirational reading of Dr. Martin Luther King's Jr., "I Have a Dream" speech by Burbank High's Mr. Donovan Glover's drama students, Maya Schultz, Vincent Agaganyan, Elijah Bowden, and Gwyneth Glover. These young people are to be commended for their desire to participate in this tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. They could have easily have stayed home and slept in. To add to the spirit of the program, a delicious breakfast that included pancakes, eggs, and bacon was served by student volunteers from not only our schools, but from the First Christian Church and Burbank Temple manual. In addition to the program, there was beautiful artwork on the wall. Three students from JBHS participated. Jalen Turner painted an exquisite oil of Jimi Hendrix. Little bit of a backstory there, but I don't want to run out of time. Giselle Keshon did an amazing pencil drawing of Dr. Martin Luther King, and our own Paris Tesfu here wrote a poem that was displayed on the wall, so maybe for February's, this would be something that she will share. Edison Elementary third-grade students from Mrs. Hubert's, Mrs. Schwartz's, and Mrs. Boyle's class, they did silhouette cutouts of Dr. King. Jefferson second-grade students in Mrs. Sorenson's drew a picture of Dr. King, and they wrote their wishes for peace and kindness on a paper cutout of a dove, because they felt that like Dr. Martin Luther King, who was a peace builder, so were they. Washington third graders from Mrs. McNeil's class also drew pictures of Dr. King that had colorful stained-glass windows colored in the background. What really kept this program going throughout was Huerta Middle School's jazz band, under the direction of Emilio Gonzalez. These students were the first to arrive and the last to leave, and so their music was really appreciated. All in all, this was an excellent example of a dream realized, because it showed the beauty of what happens when we live in a community that comes together in the spirit of service, empathy, and compassion. We hope to expand, to bring more of our community together for next year, so we hope we can count on you to be our partner in this future endeavor. Thank you, and I hope you have a good rest of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Abosta. We miss seeing you. We'll move on to superintendent's comments.
Thank you so much. Josh, I really appreciate you coming, and I've had the opportunity to speak with you on a couple of occasions. I know that Mr. Cantwell will be giving a detailed report about the governor's budget, so I'll save some of my comments for that. What I would tell you is the loss of any teacher in our district is really difficult, and it's not something that I had hoped to tackle, just being superintendent for five minutes, but it is something that we have to face. So I am committed to doing that thoughtfully and in collaboration with our partners and with the Board of Education, so that we are making the right decisions, and we're making the right decisions together. Dr. Crowther, I really appreciate you coming down today. You obviously have a lot of experience with dual immersion. You have great ideas. I will tell you that since last spring, when we were in negotiations and I was still part of the negotiations team, we worked a lot on the consideration of a zero period so that our language learners could have the opportunity to have an elective that is so paramount to us. It's very hard for me and for the Instructional Services Department, you know, to try to justify a student not being able to take choir or culinary arts because they're in dual-language classes or in designated ELD and regular ELD, and we're trying to create that opening. So I don't know when we're going to be able to do that, but I don't think it's a matter of if, it's really a matter of when. And when we can afford to do that and we can pull that off, it's definitely a priority. Diana Bass, I can't tell you how disappointed I was that I couldn't make that event. I was honestly dying the last five days, had to miss a couple of days of work. I'm just starting to feel better. But that event is really important. I thought it was really cool. Marcia Ramos invited me, and I had every intention of being there, but I won't mix it next year, and I will be there, and please continue to reach out to me. I'm so delighted that you're continuing to support our kids, especially in this area. I'm very, very much interested in that on a personal level and love to join you in all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo. We'll move on to board member responses. Mr. Ferguson not here, I believe is Ms. Tabit. Yahoo!
Yay. Thank you to all of our speakers who came out this evening. It's greatly appreciated when you take time out of your very busy schedules to come and share your thoughts and your passions with us. Ms. Abosta, I'll start with you. You know, sometimes teachers, or they retire and they go off into the universe and we never see them again, but it's lovely to see you and that you have chosen to participate in such a wonderful organization as the Human Rights Council. They have done some tremendous things in our community, and thank you for being a part of that and giving of your free time now, and I only know that that will be better now. So thank you. As to you, Dr. Crowther, same thing. You're a busy man, and yet your children are your passion and where you put your extra time. And to put yourself on a committee for DI was, with your background and experience, a great addition. And I hear, most recently today, from a few parents who wrote and said, I'm not sure why you have parents on committees. You don't listen to us, but that's not what I heard from you tonight, and I appreciate that. And I hope that your time there is well-spent, and it seems now that we might have a zero period, that it was well-spent. So thank you for the time you put into that, because it's not just your kids, it's all those kids that benefited. So appreciate you doing that, and I'm hoping that the committee and district leadership will add some time and focus to DI. I know after elementary school, I've heard conversations that it's really difficult to do what everyone would hope we could do, but I know the commitment of folks in this district will focus on that and make sure that something better is happening. So let's all, and please continue the work, because we need you. So thank you. Also, to Mr. Newman, thank you for coming out, and boy, did I say your last name correctly?
Notham.
Notham. Sorry. I, as you were talking, I was like, please, a little slower, a little slower. It's late. You know, budgets are a fickle thing, and as we'll hear tonight, it may sound great this January, and the May revise will come, and holy cow, you just never know, and we have to pre-prepare. Like Dr. Paramo said, the worst thing, two of the worst things, is cutting teachers and cutting programs for kids. And so I'm hoping that that does not happen, but we have to be prepared if it does. So it's one of those catch-22 things, you know? So I'm hoping for the best. Let's, everyone pay your taxes, pay your property taxes, pay whatever you can, send some extra in, donate to the district. Anyway, I know, being a little silly, but it might be the year for it. So thank you again, and I said I would keep myself short. Oh, the 27th, music is instrumental. One of our student board members talked about that tonight. That is a fantastic evening. The performances are amazing, and the ticket prices and the extra fundraisers, they do raffle baskets and stuff, go right into instrument repair and placing instruments, and it's vital. I joked when we first talked about budget cuts and what that means, and I said, oh, it's just simple. Everybody should just take music, choir or instrumental music, and everything will be just fine. It's not going to be, and the money that is available for those kinds of things, like instrument repair and replacement, is vital to keep those programs going. So if you have, even if you have something to do, find time to get to that performance, because it is truly one of the best events you'll ever attend. Thank you. And you're welcome, Peggy Flynn.
Ms. Ponzor Camcar.
Thank you, President Weisberg. So, Ms. Abosta, it sounds like it was a wonderful event. I went back and forth on whether I should RSVP. My children do not leave the house before noon on weekends, despite my desperate pleas for them to do so. I'm hoping next year, when they're both in school, they'll be a little more interested. But it sounds like it was a really wonderful event, and I really want to hear Ms. Paris's poem, or at least see it. You don't need to recite it, but I would love to see it. Mr. Notham, thank you for coming again. I am eager to hear the budget presentation tonight. I read that same article that said they were only going to cut by $8. We are still facing the same enrollment challenges, which is my opportunity to say, enrollment starts for TK&amp;K on Monday. Dr. Weisberg and I both attended the informational meeting this week and tried to man the chat, so to speak, for parents. There were lots of questions. I think they got most of the answers they wanted to hear, and so this is just my plug for folks. Not everyone is on the district email list or following the district on Facebook. If you know people with a four, or five, or even six-year-old who aren't yet in part of the district, let them know that enrollment is happening. Say nice things about our schools, to encourage them to come tour the schools if they're not sure, because our principals are scheduling group tours. They are eager to show off our schools. And, you know, I, when my daughter was going into kindergarten, there were still kind of COVID protocols, because it was early 2022, and so it was during that really bad wave. And so we weren't able to tour, and that was something that I feel like is super important for parents and for families to feel really welcome in our schools. So that's just my plug for folks to come and come out. My other thing I wanted to say was, oh, on the DI master plan. So, Dr. Crowther, we had a long conversation over coffee a couple of weeks ago. You know, in my reflections on the DI master plan, I think we're missing a couple of things, and so I'm glad this is a first reading. You know, I think there, one thing that really stood out to me was just that there's a big need for Armenian language dual immersion. As we've seen the Armenian language population grow within our schools, that that's a real opportunity for us to expand the program. And, you know, I've heard from a number of parents that they feel that our, our middle school offering lacks focus essentially, right? That it feels like there's a real clear cohesive program when students are in elementary and then they're, they're forced to make some trade-offs in middle school. And, you know, I've been to Mr. Weiss's classroom. He does amazing work. It was amazing to see students, you know, having real conversations about literature, fluent Spanish essentially. But we can't really ask him to bear the entire load of, of a program, right? So I also hear kind of your feedback on whether parents are listened to. I had some feedback for the team on, on that for the instructional calendar, if I'm honest. So I think that's somewhere where we can improve in terms of, in terms of really taking in the feedback that parents are giving us about what things are going to work for them and going to make sure that they come to us and stay with us. So thank you for, for bringing your feedback here.
Thank you so much. Dr. Agakanian.
Mr. Nahtam? Thank you for coming and speaking about this issue again. As someone who's worked on the budget for years, working for the speaker's office, I can tell you, you never know. But again, I've said it also, you know, we have to fight tooth and nail to keep all of our teachers here. It's very important. The future of our students depends on that. So again, this being an interesting year, again, we're hearing things, but keeping fingers crossed. But thank you for being a voice. Thank you for fighting for our teachers. I really appreciate that. And Dr. Crawford, I do agree with you and I have been someone who's been talking about this. And I do also believe that, you know, there's an old saying, if you want to learn a language quick, go live in the country or within the community. So it's not only the technical aspect of it, there are a lot of cultural factors involved, being involved. So I do appreciate you bringing up, we do should look into some of these extensions and programs, traveling, you know? It does make a big difference. So thank you for bringing that up and I also want to thank my colleagues who are talking about dual immersion. I mean, you were in Glendale. And one of the reasons I, some parents tell me that they're not coming to Burbank is because of the lack of dual immersion programs. So we need to do more of that. So we're looking into it. But again, going back to my point, it is also about the future of our students. It's no longer about one language, right? Thomas Friedman said it best in his book, "The world is flat." You know, going to the world market today is like going to Olympics and you have to basically be good at every sport now. That includes languages too now, which I'm very glad. So thank you for bringing that up and I do want to hear more about it, but also bringing the cultural factor is very, very important. And not but not, last but not least, Ms. Abasta, thank you very much for that wonderful report. Those of you who don't know Burbank Human Relations Council is, look them up online. You should join them. You've heard me many, many times refer to the sign that I still have at my front lawn, which reads in different languages, "Everyone's welcome and hate has no home here," which I think is great. This organization is very important to our community, very important to a lot of individuals, a lot of families like mine. You heard my father's story. We escaped, had to leave everything behind. We came here as refugees and it was very difficult for us because none of us spoke English. So organizations like Burbank Human Relations Council do address those concerns. But I think it's also there's more to that and I think the breakfast, which I always look forward to go to. Those of you who have never been there, I'm not going to sound biased, but they have the best bacon in town, you know? I don't know what they do, but that bacon just comes out fantastic. And the eggs are great, but the bacon is just amazing. And non-stop coffee. But it was wonderful to see our Dolores Huerta, both the band and the choir there. They did a wonderful job and I give credit to the band because one group was a little late. So they had to literally perform for almost an hour, repeating the songs but changing the tunes, which I thought was great, which speaks volume about the talent of our students, their ability to write their improvised. And I do also want to take, thank the scouts. Our own son was a member of the scouts. But overall, it was a beautiful event. I do also want to mention that our vice mayor, Nikki Perez, was also present. So was our former mayor and council, current council member, Konstantin Antoni. So we had a very good turnout. At one point, we had to ask people to, that's how full the room was. So if you've never been to one of these, put it on your calendar next year. It's a wonderful event and thank you very much. And it's good to see you again and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Dr. Agakanian. Let's see, I'll start off by just doing a couple of the things. So first, I don't know if you've noticed the fabulous new font and layout on our video. So Zanin or Zanine, Zenin is responsible for that. He's in that room, but it's awesome. And I wanted to give him a shout out because it makes it, it's transported us from 1985, 86 into 2024. So huge appreciation to you. Oh, the PIO did it. I'm still going to credit you because I like you. The end. Take credit. Anyway, it looks great, so thank you for that. Ms. Abasta, thank you so much for being sick and not being able to be at the breakfast. I've been at it for the past couple of years and it's always fantastic. And I love to see all the pictures you guys posted, a lot of them on, I think Instagram, it was really great to see and can't wait to go next year, provided Dr. Paramo doesn't get me sick again. Also, just to echo when Ms. Ponsor Campcar said, the TKK informational session, there were almost 300 people in attendance, which was amazing. Shout out to Dr. Knappig for helping moderate and Ms. Goldenberg is back there. Shout out to her as well and also Principal Rebecca Harris from Disney, who was a great presence in the chat. It was really wonderful to see so many excited parents. Some of them had their kiddos on screen and just need to see like a whole new generation of, of BUSD family members coming into the community. So it was, it was great to be part of that. I hadn't attended before, so. And let's be clear, you did all the chat work. You did a great job with that. Let's see. Mr. Notham, it's really good to see both of you again. I mean, it's ridiculous, right? Like we can sit up here and talk about what we know and what we don't know about the budget and you're talking about losing your job and that's what it comes down to. And so I'm cognizant of whatever I say is really, it's not going to help, right? But I do want to reiterate that none of this, I mean, Dr. Paramo and I meet every week and we just kind of sat there for the first couple of minutes this week and just shook our heads. It's, it's the worst. It doesn't make it any better for you, but none of these decisions are taken lightly and none of these things are finalized until they have to be because we're always hopeful that we can find creative ways to get around this. And for, you know, people who did read the Perkins Eastman Report or anything else that we've talked about, declining enrollment is really about declining birth rate and also something that we're going to talk a lot about with our council partners is the lack of affordable housing in Burbank. You can't really afford to live here if you work here or even if you don't work here. It's really difficult. And so those are the two biggest contributors to why we are losing people. It's not because of policies, it's because of a lack of ability. You know, people do, I don't remember, oh, you said it. The idea, people do, they move here for the schools, right? They are here for the schools, but it's getting harder and harder to do that. And so working with our city partners to figure out a way, one of the things that I thought was so interesting in the Perkins Eastman Report, which we'll talk about later, is how few housing units have been built in this city over a decade plus. And, and I think it's because some are really valid reasons, right? Like people move to Burbank because they want a small town and that's why I moved here. I love the feel of Burbank. I was really intentional about moving here for all of the reasons I think that people move here. It's safe and it's friendly and there's community. But it's also, you know, because of that, we all know how hard it is to afford to be here. So I, we're going to have continued conversations about that. So I think the, again, I just want to reiterate, yes, sure, some people leave because they didn't like our COVID policies or some people leave for other reasons, but it's mostly because we're seeing a decline in birth rate and we're also struggling to find affordable places for people to live. So we're having conversation constantly about creative ways to deal with that. We don't want to lose anybody, so I hope you'll keep coming back and I hope you'll keep reaching out because you don't have, I say this all the time and I'll say it again, you don't have to wait. I'm happy to sit down with you outside of a board meeting and talk some more or just keep, keep asking questions and keep connecting with us. I wish I had better, like something else to tell you that was in any way comforting or provided anything substantial, but at least what I'm saying is true. To Dr. Crowther, it's always good to see you. It's a real testament. I mean, you're here and Diana Basta is here and Larry Alblom is here. Like the Burbank community sticks around and fights to improve our district and I think that's a real testament to who we are as a community. We got, I got about two or three emails today from other parents reaching out about it and I, and I hope that they'll reach out more so that we can continue to gather lots of really important feedback. And I'm not as familiar with the program as Ms. Ponsor Campcar is because she has a different kind of investment, but I'm always constantly learning about, you know, she has kids, I have cat food. We understand that that's the sort of dichotomy up here. I will say that I buy very expensive cat food that requires a can opener. So I don't do that. I do this, just FYI for your next comment to me. But I think what you're bringing up is another really important point about enrollment, right? One of the things that the report talks about is bringing in different types of programs that incentivize people to come here. And we know that this program is at the top of that. And I do think a lot about that sort of drop-off, right? You invest all this time and energy and then it kind of goes poof. And so what can we do about that? We know that it's really, really hard to find teachers, which has been one of the biggest stumbling blocks. I know Glendale has that problem as well, but just because we know it's a problem doesn't mean we can't overcome it. So I know there's a meeting on the 26th and a meeting on the 30th coming up about that. And I, I think we're all hearing loud and clear that parents want more interaction and more ability to contribute. And I think having your voice as somebody who has such like a holistic view of the district is really valuable. So I hope you'll continue to share that, whether you're here or you're just, you're emailing or whatever it is. So I'm really appreciative. Let's see, the only other thing I wanted to talk about is very briefly, there is, and we'll talk about this when we get to it, but our DEI teacher leaders, we're revisiting that and an important distinction because we will be having plenty of conversations about bonds in the coming months and years, is that bonds are for, this is oversimplified, right? Bonds are for buildings, parcel taxes are for people. So when we're going out for a bond reissuance, right, when we're trying to re-up the bond that we currently have, that money we can't use for anything other than physical structures. But that's, technology is part of that physical infrastructure. We can't use it for salaries. And we're also talking about the whopping teacher stipend of about $1,500 for teachers who are already working full-time jobs, who are taking on this really extraordinarily important addition to their already crazy amount of duties ahead of them. So I think it's going to be great that we're going to have these conversations to help edge. I know in the three and a half years I've been on board, I've learned so much about funding and finance and where you can use money. And one of the most frustrating things, and I hope that you will talk to your elected officials about this, is how the money is given to us. So people who have not been in the world of education are issuing restricted funds to us. So essentially telling us how and where we can use our money. And often we don't need that money there, we need the money here. So next time you talk to your representative, encourage them to loosen up that restricted fund. So we have a little more room to put the money where it needs to go. So I'm looking, all that to say, I'm looking forward to the report today. Ms. Markarian, I'm really happy to see you here. You came back. Lots of people will come and they'll speak to something that makes them really angry and then they disappear into the ether, but your investment is really impressive. So I'm really happy to see you again. I'm sorry to like draw focus to you. So thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. I know we'll have lots of wonderful conversations moving forward. And we are going to move forward to reports to the board, 10A, report on the 2022, 2023 annual fiscal report and the financial and performance audits of Proposition 39 general obligation bonds building fund measure S program. Can't believe people are leaving. That's scintillating.
For President Weisberg, board members, Superintendent Paramo, colleagues and community, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce our auditor, Gemma Tashinsky with Clifton Larson Allen. She's here tonight to present her findings on the annual audit that was completed just in the past month or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantwell. Good evening, everybody, members of the board administration. Dr., I'm sorry, I'm going to say it wrong, Agakanian, I'm very sorry for your loss. I know it's so hard to lose a parent, so. All right, we had a PowerPoint. I don't know if that's ready to go or, and if not, I just, okay, great. Thank you, sorry. All right, perfect, thanks. Hopefully I'll do it right. All right, I'm going to just walk you through, well, again, my name is Gemma Tashinsky. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen, where your public accounting firm. We are engaged to do a financial and compliance audit of your June 30th, 2003 financial statements and activity. And then also we'll get into the bond measure. And we did complete the audit in December, filed the report with the state and all the other required agencies on time. And so we're pleased that that process went really well this year. And, okay, we'll go. With just a quick overview, I see a lot of familiar faces. I know you guys have heard my presentation before. So just a refresher, really our, our purpose in terms of performing the audit is to issue an opinion on the financial statement. So really district's management's responsible for the financial report. Even though we help management produce the report, management's responsibility, our responsibility is to issue an opinion. So informed reader of the financial statements can feel comfortable with the information they're looking at, making decisions. Also, you know, it's required as part of, you know, education code. It's, you know, we have an audit guide we have to follow, requires an audit. You receive federal funding, so that requires an audit as well. And there's some state programs we have to audit. So lots, lots of different folks are interested, including yourselves and the public, in your results. And of course, there's the fiduciary responsibility. All right, real quick recap of the audit process. It's definitely one that takes us through, through a better course of the year and it starts with considering risk. So we've got to think about what are the internal controls? What are those areas in the financial statements that might be higher risk or subject to estimation? You know, how do we design our audit? Our audit is not, we're not auditing internal controls. We're just gaining an understanding. We're doing walkthroughs or testing controls so we can, you know, gain some competence in terms of what accounts we want to look at, how deep we want to dive into things. And that drives us then to our substantive phase where we're actually looking at the details. So we're doing things like confirmations, analytical analysis, we're looking at revenue, you know, how's it recorded? How's it supported? Is it recorded in the correct period? All of those types of tasks and that then results in, in the report that you have in your packet. All right, so I will move on to kind of the things that are required that we communicate to governance every year. First of all, we talk about our opinion and you're going to find that the, the first page of the report has our opinion. When you look at that, you'll see we've issued an unmodified opinion. So that means the reader of the financial statements, informed reader can rely on the information. It's the best opinion we can render. So, so that's very positive. We had no changes in our scopes. And we kind of go through this risk assessment, we kind of decide what we're going to focus on, what the scope of the audit is. If there was a change in the scope, then we would definitely talk about that as well, but we had no significant changes in scope to our audit. We just continued with the plan as, as we worked into and through the audit process. We had one new accounting standard that had to be implemented this year. So we worked with management to pull together all of the record keeping that needed to come together in order to report in the financial statements that information. This was a standard that required the recording of multi-year agreements for subscription-based information technology arrangements as a liability, an asset and a liability. So this is something that you don't see in your unaudited actuals when you're looking at, at that. It's really just part of this final financial statement report. So we worked with management to pull that information together. report. So we worked with management to pull that information together and make sure that the report's in compliance with that new standard. Also, I mentioned estimates. So one of the big focuses of the audit is thinking about things that are subject to estimation. And so there's a list there for you, things like, you know, how are you depreciating and capitalizing assets? Are you, you know, following consistent principle and how you do that? And then, things like leases and those subscription-based information technology agreements, when we accrue those, we have to think about, you know, what's the lifespan and what, what kind of interest rate assumptions are we using to value them? So there's some subjectivity. And then, of course, things like your other post-employment benefits, your health and welfare and your person's pension. Those are all based on valuation. So there's a lot of assumptions that the actuary and the district, at least for purse, or for OPAH, for person's, that's really happening up at the state level. It's kind of out of your control. But we are looking to see that that information is presented properly on the financial statements. And those are some big numbers. So we do spend some time there. Other communications, you know, if we were having significant difficulties, we would have to communicate that. I know you guys had some transition this year. Fiscal Department did a great job, brought in a consultant, Mike, I'm going to forget, Lee, right? I was going to use the wrong last name. We'd worked with him before in another district. He did a great job, as well as Karen Watlin, who had kind of had to pick up a little bit, I think, extra work to try to, try and get you through the audit process. So they did a great job. We didn't have any audit adjustments. You'll see that on page 88. So again, good job in closing process. We had a few proposed adjustments. And in your packet, there's a letter that we issue and it lists those proposed adjustments. So those are things that we found in the course of the audit. They weren't significant enough to cause us to adjust them in the financial statements, but we do bring them to your attention. And some of the things, like the lottery, it's estimated when the district closes, we come in on our audit process a little bit later, we have better information, there's a difference, and we call it a past adjustment. No big deal. Same with some other things like recognition. There's, sometimes there's timing difference between when you receive information, when we come to do the audit. And then the FEMA one that you'll see in that letter, that, that was just a really, a tricky one. Individual who was part of that program and doing the application and determining how much was the grant, how much of the grant or recognized that person had left the district. So it was just a little bit of a challenge for everybody to figure out kind of what had happened and what the right number was. But I think we all came to the right conclusion. And again, it wasn't material, so no adjustment. In terms of understanding internal controls, we issued our letter with no internal control findings. So again, good policies, procedures in place. With the exception of one item, we had one deficiency on bank reconciliations. And I guess, part of the whole transition and, and, you know, changes of staff, you had some bank reconciliations that were not prepared timely. And that's a really important control. So that is in the letter. But something that's very easy to correct. All right. So that's the financial piece. You receive a lot of federal money. So we have to look at those federal programs as well. And, and in your report, you'll see we've issued an unmodified opinion on compliance. So there were no non-compliance items noted during the course of our audit. We had no internal control deficiencies identified either. This year, we tested your ESR gear funds. Those were required to be tested every year until you completely spent them. And then the child nutrition cluster was part of the normal rotation. So on your federal funds, we're going to rotate those programs, those significant programs. Every third year, they get audited. So you'll see some different programs next year. The district qualifies as a low-risk auditee. And that's because you do receive unmodified opinions. You don't have material weaknesses. You don't have material non-compliance on your federal program. So we're able to classify you as low risk. What does that mean? Means that when we test, we only have to test 20% of expenditures instead of 40%. That's important. It's less time for your, your district staff to have to pull things for us and then less time for us as well. So that's good. In terms of the state audit and the programs, you'll see the list of programs that were required to test on page 103 of the report. The list included some new things. Some of the standard things are attendance. We talk a lot about enrollment. So attendance is a really big part of the audit. This year, we looked at, every year we rotate the sites that we look at for their attendance procedure. So this year, we went to Bret Hart, McKenley, Providentia, Muir and Bureau's High School. And then we always look at independent study and continuation high school. We're required to do that. Some other new things this year were home-to-school transportation reimbursement. That was a new section we had to look at. You had your independent study certification for ADA loss mitigation. We had to look at that, make sure you had your independent study program in place in order to qualify for that funding. And then, new this year also was transitional kindergarten and making sure your ratios were appropriate in your classrooms. So we issued an unmodified opinion on compliance. We do have one finding. It's a recurring finding related to the ACES program. It's just a documentation issue, continuing to make sure that the early release is documented for students when they leave early. So, not a big deal, not a financial, it's not a finding that comes with any sort of financial consequence, but a documentation item to, to work on. So those are, those are the key things on the financial and compliance audit. I'll stop and ask, answer questions and then I'll move on to the performance audit, if that makes sense.
Thank you for this. This is very helpful and thanks for the walkthrough. I'm just curious on the internal controls, right? So we haven't gotten our FICMAT report yet back. But we know that part of the error that happened was around controls, right, and around systems. So I'm curious how you evaluated kind of that piece of things or whether that doesn't come into play because it didn't happen at the end of closing the books.
Okay. And so you are speaking about a particular situation or?
Yeah. I mean, Andy, can you help me out here?
The payroll reversal?
Yeah, the accrual for the...
Yeah. And, and that's not really something that would come into our internal control. That was something that I think the accrual happened at the end of '22, closing the books. It didn't clear out during the year until later in the period. And then, we're coming in and auditing at the end of '23. Once it had already cleared out, you know, had it been there when we came to audit, then we probably would have said, hey, there's something wrong here. So it wouldn't really have been specific to our audit. But we do look at the accruals at year-end. And we are looking to see that things are, you know, that there is a process for establishing the accruals and that they're supported. So it's a normal part of the process.
Okay, great. So, just to paraphrase, so I'm making sure that I understand, the reason that that wasn't a finding is that we caught it in time and were able to reflect it on our unaudited financials.
Exactly. You corrected it.
Just making sure. Because I feel like when, when people see like, oh, no problems with controls. It's like, hey, hey, guys, remember that thing that happened? And it, but it's, we're going to hear more about that when we get our report back from FICMAT. That's not part of the official audit because we found it in time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And sometimes the level of testing might be different. So the scope of what FICMAT is doing may be a little different. Ours is to gain a, an understanding so that we decide how deep to dive on things, not necessarily like a, what I would call an internal control audit. So, okay. Anything else?
Any other questions? I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. So, go back to our PowerPoint. Do I need to press a button or somebody else?
Can we have the PowerPoint back on?
And if not, I can just talk. It's okay. Okay. But now I have to push the button. All right. So Measure S. All right. So we were also engaged to look at your Measure S program. So, two parts to that. There's the financial audit, which is, you know, kind of part of the other audit already. But a separate report is issued, which is just of the Measure S funds. So when you look at that report, you'll have, you'll see the unmodified opinion on page one. Again, we didn't have any significant changes to scope in our audit. It's a very simple audit in terms of, it's a simple balance sheet, a simple income statement. There's not a lot of unusual activity. You know, normally, all you're going to see on that income statement is interest, the expenses that you're spending the bond on. And if you issue a bond, you'll see proceeds and that's pretty much it. So it's a pretty, pretty simple. So no changes, no significant changes or significant footnote disclosures or changes to disclosures to talk about. So no internal control issues there. On the performance side, that's probably the more interesting part of it because that's looking at the, the actual expenditures. And, you know, do they match up to what the voters approved? And so that's kind of the funner piece of the, the project. And so we, we do note on page 12 that we had no items of non-compliant, compliance noted for expenditures tested. You can see that we selected 75% of total expenditures. So that's 1.1 million, excluding salaries. And then we do look at salaries also to make sure that the individuals that are being charged are for responsibilities associated with a bond. And it's a very small piece. It's an accounting person. So not, not a whole lot going there. So, so really good results, no non-compliance. You know, when we, when we look at those items, not only are we matching it up to, you know, what the voters approved for, but also we're looking to make sure it's supported, invoices, POs, bids, if bids are required, contracts, things like that. And, and that's it. So clean audit. And again, just that one finding, bank reconciliation. So that's an important control to, to tighten up. Anything else?
No, it's, I mean, good news.
Yeah.
Yay!
Good. All right. Well, thank you, Andy, and thank you, your team.
Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Good job. And thank you.
We appreciate it very much. We are going to move on to 10B, the Perkins Eastman facilities master plan presentation, which I think has the most hinges of any presentation we've had. Pages and pages of hinges.
President Weisberg, board members, again, colleagues and community. Again, my pleasure to introduce another great consulting group that we've been working with over the past year. Just want to orient ourselves a little bit before I do hand it over to Perkins Eastman. So a few questions that have come up since the agenda was published. And so again, I think it's helpful to provide a little context. First of all, what is it we're doing tonight? You are receiving a report. I've already received a few comments that there may have been a couple non-material errors and just, you know, misidentifying a picture and some things like that, that we do want to clean up and correct. So by all means, as the community begins to digest this report, we certainly welcome that feedback and will make those adjustments. You know, you will see that the, the Perkins Eastman team has really put a lot of work in. We hired them back in February of '22. And so it's been almost a full year. They've been working on this. This is, is useful for the district for a variety of purposes. I mean, one that you'll hear about in a little bit is that they've actually evaluated our, the availability of state funding sources for us. And so looking at both our, our needs, helping us identify again what sites might be in sequential order and in need for, for things like roof replacements and other priorities, but also helping us be able to find alternative funding sources. If the board does decide to move forward with a bond in the future, this will also be a useful tool. However, I want to be very clear, both for you and the community, this would not become the single document from which we can assume, you know, all projects identified on this list would be, would be part of a bond. We have more than a billion dollars identified of need. As far as the initial conversations that you guys have, have had back in the fall, it was wanting to further explore a potential bond that might yield between 370 and 450 million. So we know that the projects on this list are, again, far exceed, not necessarily our bonding capacity, because our bonding capacity is much higher than what you've expressed an interest in considering, but rather that rate extension, we would have to prioritize projects from this list. And so again, I just want to caveat that as we talk about needs across this district, that we still have needs that far outpace our funding. With that, it's my pleasure to introduce the Perkins Eastman team. We have Patrick Davis, Kimberly Coffeen, and Madison Stout. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, everyone. And we're really excited to be here. And one of the things that I appreciate about my job is I do fall in love with communities. And this is one of the communities we fall in love with. And it makes our job easier when we care that much and as much as you guys care. So I'm going to go ahead and, if you can go up to the, yes, there's quite a few pages. We made the executive summary 25 pages instead of 520 or 30 pages. So that's good news. And one of the things that I think is important to recognize with the work that we do is there's a lot of different parts and pieces that fit into this equation. We went through an engagement process to determine the guiding principles. We looked at the sites in terms of educational adequacy. Our team AECOM went out to look at the conditions and sort of the nuts and bolts. We looked at state eligibility as a component of potential prioritization. The demographic enrollment projections, which you, if you have Googled California enrollment projection, that graph is pretty much the same in most districts. And we looked at your educational specs and the standards moving forward, which reflects some of the visions of the district, like diversity and inclusion. You can see some of those things move into the, the future vision of the schools if these improvements are implemented. And then we did the cost estimating as a component as the final report with some prioritization, a starting point for your prioritization because the need obviously is far greater than, than what your funding is available. But this is not new news. You guys have been doing Measure B. And back in 1997, the first bond passed in 1950s. The range of, the age of facilities is over 100 years old. So ongoing, you're always improving, you're always tapping into state funding. But, you know, again, that can only go so far. When we don't have state funding for deferred maintenance, there, there's only really one way to do that. And it's with a local bond and tapping into state funding. And just to look at your portfolio of stock, so 76% of the existing building stock square footage is over 60 years old. And yes, you're going to do improvements in the 1950s. Technologies change over time. The building infrastructure and framework changes over time to support those new technologies. So just to acknowledge that we love those old facilities, that they require different types of modernization and extent of work. And what's also really important to acknowledge is the current state funding application process is a first come, first serve. We currently have, the current workload and approved list is 5 billion. That is, that is not allocated yet. With, if and when the bond pass in November of 2024, the state bond, that's anticipated to be 14 billion. So again, we always recommend where you have the state eligibility, acknowledge that it is a first come, first served. Take advantage of it because that is a reimbursement to your program. And it will come eventually, maybe in 10 years, five years, and it'll become an opportunity for you to look at your later prioritized projects and implement those projects. So fortunately, you have 20 schools that have eligibility. Again, to acknowledge, there's a different percentage for modernization than new construction. It's a 60-40 percentage. So your share as a district is 22.7 million and the state share would be 34 million. Again, that's $20, $23. Those all get modified. Additional grants are added and that number will go up. And then the 50, 50-50% for new construction, it's about 11.5 million. And typically, that is something you can use across the district. It's not allocated to a particular site, but it is allocated to types of programs. Might be special ed, depending on the type of special ed that's being completed at the site. So that's something where you want to strategically use as you look at the district wide. So, what's great is you have the eligibility. What's needed to get that, those funds is your match, as well as California Department of Ed and Division of State architect approved drawings. And then you, you are able to then go to the OPSC and the State Allocation Board for your application. So, exciting news and something you can look at as an advantage as you move forward.
So our team conducted a survey. It resulted in about 510 responses from parents and guardians, community members, teachers, students, staff, administrators and more. The most responses that we got were from parents and guardians. This survey was super important, helping us inform the master plan. We use these responses when developing the framework that we'll talk about later. So, the, all the questions were really important to the master plan. But these two questions in particular were essential for developing that framework. It's a little small. You probably can't read it from back there. But on the left, the question is asking, what is most important to the master plan to make it successful? And the highest rated answer was creating a safe school. And after that, we've highlighted in those boxes, the next answers like having a a clear and consistent vision and creating well-being for the students and the staff. The other question is asking, from, rank these in one, one through ten, which one is most important to you? And number one was the teacher and staff well-being. So, they do correlate, and we're really happy with the amount of responses that we got from the community. And these guiding principles, we developed through talking with the stakeholders, as well as looking at the LCAP, and also the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three principles that the board had developed. These principles are creating safe schools that provide a secure environment for students, ensuring that every student has a high-quality learning environment, making smart and efficient investments, recruiting and retaining high-quality employees, supporting physical, emotional, and mental wellness of each student and staff member, providing superlative spaces for art creation and performance, investing in a sustainable future, and providing resources equitably to support programs. And these were also important to guiding the entire master plan.
Great. Thanks, Madison. So, one of the things, but one of the things we look at when we evaluate buildings is how well utilized the facility. So, looking at the enrollment at the schools versus the capacity of the building and the campus. And what we found was, I mean, quite frankly, a lot of your schools are well utilized, which is a really good, good story to tell. So, the bulk of your elementary schools fit within that eighty-five to a hundred percent utilization rate, which, again, is right where we want to see schools. We do see a bit of a drop in the middle schools, where they, they do see some decline enrollment, and then high schools are, you know, eighty, eighty-five percent, which is, which is quite good. But as we look to the future, this was discussed earlier in the meeting today, you know, part of this plan is to help prepare for the future, right? So, we're not just looking at today, we want to understand where the trends are going into the future. And as was stated earlier, and like, as Kim mentioned, like a lot of districts, we are anticipating declining enrollment, largely because of the birth rate declines. Kim mentioned California, we're lucky enough to work across the country. This is a consistent story across many school districts, you know, all across the country. You know, we're working in Boston, DC, very similar story, where we're seeing birth rate declines. So, you're not, you're not abnormal. This is a very normal thing that's happening across the country. There are very few districts that are growing, quite frankly. The one thing that I think is important to recognize, you mentioned it, is the lack of housing sort of stock. We did incorporate some of the planned developments, but quite frankly, it's not going to be enough to, to outpace the birth rate decline. So, thinking about that as a potential sort of broader initiative that needs to be talked about, as you, as you raised earlier. We have it here at the district level. We've also done school level projections, which will be in the final report. So, we'll be able to see the, the results at the school level. So, one, one thing I want to note here, declining enrollment gets a lot of people get concerned, and rightfully so. There's a lot of things associated with it. But there's some opportunities that comes with it. I've actually never walked a school where you've actually see a million empty classrooms. Schools use them all of, you know, every single room there is on the campus for whatever purpose. Declining enrollment actually creates opportunities, opportunities for us to think about different spaces. And we're gonna talk about different initiatives and programs that can go into, into schools to enhance the environments, enhance the programs. You need space to do that, right? If you want to have bigger libraries, you need bigger space to do that. So, declining enrollment is actually an opportunity for us to think about the organization and the space a little bit differently. So, thinking as a positive, we can actually now create the programs that potentially attract more students, potentially bring students back. And now we have the spaces to support them intentionally. You know, we'll talk a lot about, you know, support spaces for us, you know, mental health and counselors. You need space to do that. You need intentionally designed space to do that. So, this declining enrollment, while there are a lot of negative things with declining enrollment, thinking about the opportunities to reuse space differently and enhance the school programs is something to think about. So, one of the things, you know, tying into that, as Kim mentioned, we were lucky enough to walk all over campuses, in many cases a few times, to assess what we call the educational adequacy, or how well does that building or campus support a twenty-first century learning program? So, we've got a two hundred and forty or so metric evaluation system that we go through and evaluate each of the campuses, looking at the quality of the spaces. So, the key difference between this type of assessment and a traditional conditions assessment, a typical conditions assessment is looking at the quality of the roof, HVAC, the systems, assets, all of that. We did that. But this assessment's really looking at, do the spaces and the quality of those spaces support how we want to deliver instruction? So, it looks at the classroom. Is that classroom big enough to support a modern learning environment? Are there access to windows in daylight? There's a lot of studies that show views to the outside are really beneficial. Is the right furniture in place? You know, we, we went to school, there was a lot of lecturing, and teachers stood in front of the classroom. Classrooms are dynamic now. So, does the furniture support it? Is there the right educational technology? We also look at a lot about the safety and security. As Madison mentioned, that was the number one, you know, survey result. So, we look at safety and security in a holistic sense. So, we look at, you know, the things we all need to think about in terms of locking campuses down, hardening the campuses, but also things like transparency and visibility, dispersment of adults across the campus to make sure that we have passive observation opportunities. We look at the presence. What's the experience that students and families have when they're coming to the campus? Is the entrance clear? Do they know where to go? Is it welcoming? Is it safe? We look at assembly. I think one of the things we all learned the hard lesson through COVID is we really value that social connection we have with our, with our colleagues and students. So, are there spaces for students and, and classes to come together? Extend and learning. So, this is an idea that teaching can, teaching and learning can happen anywhere in a campus, not just in the four walls of a classroom. So, are there opportunities for us to look at the campus in a little bit different way? So, you can actually have small group instruction happening over there, individual learning happen over there, but really intentionally, intentionally designed spaces to support different types of learning outside of the traditional classroom. Organization, as I mentioned, are classrooms clustered together? Can teachers co-teach and collaborate with each other? Are counselor suites in the appropriate location so that students aren't walking across the campus to get to them? How well organized is the campus? Does the community have access to the campus? These schools are anchors in these communities. They're, they're part of the fabric of the community, and these are assets. So, are there spaces for the community to come and, and use the facility in a safe way that actually you could lock down some of the campus so that the community can use part of it, and the school can use some of it? So, think about the community access. And then we did visual assessments of environmental qualities. So, again, access to daylight and views and things like that. And with this, this showing, just a very quick snapshot, we did this for every school, we create these little, what we call the rosette graphics. And the way to read these, if you have not seen a graphic like this, is you, if you were scoring well in every single category, all of the, the bars would be at the extent of the circle. So, if a score, if a school scored perfectly, every single one of these we fill to the outside. What we can see here is we're able to, you know, have a, a data set for every single school and compare them, you know, across each other, but also look individually at each individual school and see where there's some areas of deficiency. So, as you're going through that prior, prioritization process for future bonds, you now have a clear understanding of, you know, where the needs are at each individual school, and you can actually compare that across the district. And to elaborate a little more on that, we have these graphics in the report, which are box and whisker plots, so we can actually see the distribution of, of data. So, you can, the categories in the X-axis, so we can actually see, for example, if I got a pretty tight cluster of scores in the classrooms, which actually is a very good thing, that's one of your better categories, and just from, you know, seeing the data, that your classrooms are actually in pretty good shape. They need some updating and modernization, but the size is right. You have access to windows. A lot of the core things that cost a lot of money to actually implement, you've got a lot of those things. So, when we're talking about modernization of classrooms, we're mostly talking about finished upgrades and furniture and, you know, fixtures and things like that. So, but we can also see we've got extended learning challenges. That's, that's a category that scored low across most of the schools. Again, those are those informal learning environments. So, there are opportunities to actually increase the opportunity, the experience for kids with small group learnings or outdoor classrooms, things like that, where you can actually learn outside the classroom. So, you know, looking at this, we can actually start to see the spread of that data. So, each of the, the schools are represented. If you've never had a box and whisker plot, the bottom line is the low end. The box shows the twenty-fifth percentile, the top of the box shows the seventy-fifth percentile, and then the top, the top line shows the highest score. So, if you're, if all your scores were really close together, that means all of your scores, all of your scores, all of your schools scored very close together. If they're far apart, you see a wide range of results. Happy to chat more about these if you, if you have questions on the graphics. But anyways, we've got a lot of really, really rich data to inform future, future projects.
So, ultimately, what we're tasked to do is find projects that align with the guiding principles, align with the things that we saw out in the field and the deficiencies. And this is literally like a small little sample of, of the many scopes of work that we costed out. But some of the things that sort of stood to the top were controlled entry points, areas for professional development, care centers, with your strong partnership with the city, I think it's over twenty years partnership, continue to expand and grow upon that. Science labs, certainly too small in, in a lot of cases, and maybe not enough of them. Music and flex labs at your elementary, with the arts so prominent in your district at the high, high school level, with the, with the grants that you're receiving, all of these things are going to support that articulation of the work that you're doing at the high school down to the elementary and middle. And then STEAM labs, again, project-based learning, thinking of engineering and science and math and arts all combined, having a space that allows for that type of activity to happen on the, on the sites. Again, this is just a snapshot of the many scopes of work that we identified. And again, all of this is coming back and responding to the community feedback, to the interviews that we had with each of the principals and department leader interviews, facility condition index, educational adequacy, and the LCAP goals. So, there's a lot of network of connections here when you look at this report. We did do some initial prioritization framework ideas, starting with the base needs, infrastructure needs, learning environments, enhanced programs. And this is really just to set up a way in which you can look at those scopes of work and costs in the totality of what your available funds are. Not to say that this has to be done district-wide. There can be another layer of prioritization based on the facility condition index of all of your campuses, and there may be more funds that might go to another campus, but they might be in the same kind of category. So, no, note that this is just a first step, a first framework to discuss, but there's lots of variations in which you can focus your future prioritization framework. But I'll have Madison go, did you want to go over this one, or do you want?
You can.
Okay. So, we, we ended up dialing a little bit further down on the prioritization. We had a priority one A, which is projects that are specifically associated with site safety and infrastructure. So, when you think about that, that's your roofs. If your roofs are leaking, if your air is not a good quality, so you want to do that first. You want to make sure that you're maintaining your facilities in a way that's going to be for the, for the longevity of that facility. So, we really focused on priority one A, just on site safety and infrastructure. The second part was related to equitable access. So, that was in particular, you would see the softball fields for women's softball at the high school level being, you know, an area that needs to be focused on. And we do believe we have a solution for that on both sites, which is great. So, we're happy that, that is part of this project. Priority two, focused on learning environments. And then priority three was the educational support services and students and approved efficiency. So, you'll see on this next chart that Pat will go through, the PIs are a little bit more manageable on one A and one B. So, that gives you a sense of, you know, how you can sort of look at that as possibility for the next bond, if that does move forward. But of course, you know, the need is always going to be greater than every master plan I worked on, and I've worked on fifteen district-wide master plans. It's pretty much the need is, and, and the funding allocation is of this kind of percentage. So, about a third of what you have to the total need is, is really how it comes out.
Yeah, I mean, Kim covered much, I won't, I won't spend too much time, much longer on this. But, you know, Andy, Dr., Mr. Campbell mentioned earlier, over a billion dollars worth of, of need across the district. So, you know, certainly a number to keep in mind. And as we think about the bond, you know, how do you prioritize the, the needs? And, you know, we've laid out a very simplistic, I would say, framework for prioritization. Obviously, there's a lot more that goes into actually selecting, selecting projects. But one thing to note is we, we do, you know, see the one point one billion, but we actually did anticipate some sort of escalation, because you don't start projects today, right? So, bonds happen over a rolling period. So, typically, you escalate out to the middle of construction. So, we did increase, so it's, you know, the one point five includes some anticipated escalation in terms of construction. Construction never gets cheaper. So, just something to keep in mind as you, as you go. But we've got this down to the site level. Right now, we're showing the district level here, but we do have site level costs associated with the different categories as well. So, I think that's our last.
Yep, this is our last slide. Just to kind of highlight, the one A is, again, the building envelope, building utilities and services, and classroom technology and infrastructure. So, when you think of that, if your classroom, your roofs are not leaking, you have good air quality, you have great technology, you know, that goes pretty far in, in the needs of the student and the teaching that happens in the classroom. So.
One, sorry, one other, bouncing back and forth here. Just to highlight, the, the one B also includes, Kim mentioned the softball field, but ADA access was, was something that's critical in there. It's a big cost. And also identifying single-user restrooms across multiple campuses. So, that equitable access is, is, you know, ensuring access to athletic fields, bathrooms, and making sure all residents and students can get to the campus with an ADA required. So, I think that's our last slide. Happy to take any questions?
Do any of my colleagues have questions? I know this one does. I have one, I have one quick one. I think a lot of my other questions have to do with all the other pages, so I'll wait until we have that conversation another day. But I did want to ask very briefly, you talked at the beginning about how, and in the report, how twenty of our schools are eligible. Why not all of the schools?
It's based on age. So, portables, it's twenty years, and twenty-five years for permanent.
Okay.
So, and it's based on the last time it was modernized. So, it's not the original built date. It's when it was last modernized. There's also additional grants for buildings that are over seventy-five years of old, years of age. And I believe we did factor that in as well.
Okay. And just to restate something that, that you said earlier, when you were looking at priority one A, which is site safety and infrastructure upgrades, that's, we have to think about safety in a broader way. It's not just like cameras. It's also roofs and making sure that classrooms are mold-free or leak-free. So, it's, it's a more expansive understanding of safety.
Right, right. And you can see the detail in the cost estimates, for sure. For example, single point of entry will likely be in there, which means that there's some reconfiguration needed on the interior to make sure that a person that comes in gets checked in, and then there's a way in which they safely get onto campus.
Right.
So, yeah, it's pretty diverse. It's, it's not, you define it based on the scope of work that's been detailed.
I think it's helpful for people, because sometimes we think about the words in a really narrow way, or at least I do. So, it's helpful to think about it more expansively.
Very good.
Hit it.
All right.
On the educational adequacy, adequacy measurements, does, my understanding of this now, I think, is that this is much more about like how things are set up and, and less about the physical quality of the schools, of, of the facilities, right? So, this is not, this does not take into account deferred maintenance. Is that right?
That, that, that metric does not, but we did do deferred maintenance.
Oh, yeah. I saw that deferred. I just, I was curious, because, you know, the first thing I did was like make a table of like, like, who got the top score? And like, I was like, well, this is not what I would have expected at all. But it's really about layout. So, that, that's super helpful.
There's an example, I think, that can illustrate this maybe. So, the, like, facility condition assessment will look at the quality of a window. It'll say this window is in good condition. An educational adequacy assessment will say, do you have enough windows? Are there enough views to the daylight? So, it's looking at what the experience and the quality of that experience, not the quality of the material itself or the, the system or asset.
Great. That's super helpful. And once I figured out the box and whiskers, that was super helpful, too.
Sorry, we're kind of data nerds.
No, I love, I love it. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
You kind of, if you were talking about the quality of the building or the, you were talking about ADA access to new things being built?
No.
No.
To existing?
Yes.
So, when things don't work, that?
Don't work or don't exist.
Or, is poorly, the, the, the way it was set up is like, really?
And I can tell you, oftentimes, that's the minimum requirement that you're experiencing, and it's not always the most logical. So.
So, that's part of that.
Unfortunately, you run into cost restrictions and things may, are made based on whatever the minimum code requirement is. What we've done is we applied a contingency of ten percent, in some cases twenty percent at sites, that we knew needed to improve accessibility. And so, that's in the one B dollar amount.
And how do you, sorry, but how do you come to those conclusions? I mean, obviously, you site walked. But you can walk your site. So, do you know really when something is not feasible or could be better planned?
We know that some sites could be better planned and still maintain some of the integrity We know that some sites could be better planned and still maintain some of the integrity of what I think is why it wasn't done, you know, the historic buildings. They have a sense of presence, but you can still provide ramps and still not, you know, diminish that. So where our FM, our facility master plan starts with is beyond the base minimum. It goes beyond that because we know that what was designed is kind of like, not, again, is just the code minimum. And we believe diversity inclusion is more than just the code minimum. It requires a universal approach to a design.
In addition to that, are those thought processes for the students on campus at the time? Many of our school sites are used by the public. So does that also come into effect, too, when you look at something?
Yeah, I think that would be part of the next phase of work.
Especially at our high schools.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think what we've done is we've allocated funds for the next teams to then, you know, really bring that to the next level. It should really be beyond just code minimum. And if it is a requirement of, you know, access for community in certain areas, that should be a component of what needs to be assessed.
Yeah, Mr. Campbell.
And also, just to supplement, I mean, we do have a number of buildings right now that are not up to current ADA code. We're able to be grandfathered in, but as soon as we do a project on that site, DSA will start looking at path of travel, not just, you know, if we're looking at, you know, I was at an elementary campus this afternoon where I saw the, in the auditorium, there's no accessibility onto the stage. So there's not a lift, and there's not an ADA-accessible ramp. And so if we were to do something on that site, even if we're not touching that building, DSA may still come in and say the path of travel is going to require you to do ADA improvements to the building between where you're working on and the actual point of ingress egress from the public right of way. So there's a lot of pieces here that are things that, yeah, maybe across our campus are not up to the current 2024 code, that we're, we don't have to make immediate improvements to, but once you start working on a site, DSA is going to say, hey, now is the time that you actually go back and take care of that thing that was done in the 70s that no longer is up to current code.
Can you explain what DSA is for our listeners?
Of course. Our Division of State Architects. So as a public school entity, we are not required to comply with local building codes, but rather our building inspector and the entity responsible for building codes and ultimately certifying occupancies in buildings comes at the state level through an entity called the Division of State Architects.
Thank you. Ms. Spencer Campcar.
Okay. I've got my question. Lucky for you, Mr. Campbell answered many of my questions at about 5 o'clock tonight, so you are lucky. So my other question was, I like totally lost my train of thought. No, you're totally fine. Oh, so going kind of back to looking at the educational adequacy, the way I'm thinking about this, and maybe this is more for my board colleagues as like a point of discussion, is as we think about declining enrollment projections, what the cost of deferred maintenance and kind of what I think of as being like our, the priority 1A and B and HVAC, is essentially how I'm thinking about those, combining, kind of like looking across those things, right? Educational adequacy, how much it's going to cost us to bring the school kind of up to base level, and enrollment, I think is maybe how we start to think about. I guess, I'm just curious, as you look across those three things, did you find any sites that you felt like, wow, this is going to be a lot of squeeze for not a lot of juice in terms of, there's a lot of investment here to bring it up to a basic level for a small number of students, out of curiosity?
I don't, I wouldn't agree with that statement because I think all of your facilities are well-maintained and are solid. However, there was one site that did have more portables, almost 50% portables, and many in poor condition. And so in lieu of your comment of modernizing something, our response was remove and add new construction at that site. So that's how we responded to that big gap, I guess, in terms of where we were seeing the other facilities.
And so on that point, right, so I noticed that there's like a line for portable removal. Is that in that project, or would that be part of like the interior modernization, new construction part of like the?
Which category?
Priority two.
So the removal of the portable would be in that portable removal category.
Yeah.
And the cost to construct would be in that new construction renovation.
And that was in response to declining enrollment.
Yeah, so those are anticipated not to be needed. Most of the portals have reached the, you know, the end of their useful life. So we wanted to get rid of most of them, and in cases where you don't need them because of enrollment, we suggest a removal. And in the cases that Kim mentioned, where if you remove all of them, you don't have enough space for the program, so we had to add some space back.
Great, thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Mr. Campbell, could you briefly just explain the, for people who are interested in the master plan, what's next after this?
Yeah, so again, there's going to be a few non-material updates, just to make sure that, again, that the documents and the appendices are as accurate as possible. We also have asked them to do a PV, a solar study for solar shade structures and roof structures across the district, and looking at our electricity needs and the loading capacity each of the sites. So when they complete that study, as well as when we make those final updates, the entire master plan will be available on the website.
Okay.
And it'll be something that'll be a source of discussion, certainly as we continue to move forward with looking at methods of funding some of these projects.
So just to reiterate, there will be a time in a future meeting where we can talk about the entirety of the report. Yeah? No?
Probably when we make the recommendations.
All?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that certainly, again, the next couple months, we'll have multiple discussions around the entirety of the master plan, the appendices, as well as the identification of potential projects for either a bond or for other methods of funding.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Spencer Campcar.
I would just say, as Mr. Campbell notified, like, noticed at the beginning that there were some non-material changes, I brought in a subject matter expert on Disney Elementary, which was my child, and she noticed, like, that's not the library, that's the book fair. So I would just encourage all of our school sites, our parents, our teachers, to take a look at what the facilities master plan says about your school. I want to make sure that folks trust this document and that it feels, they feel like it's a reflection of what they want to see happen at their school and what the school currently looks like. So, thanks.
We are going to move on to 10C, a report on the governor's budget update for 2024, And I believe we have a PowerPoint for this as well.
We do.
Woo-hoo.
Board members, colleagues, and community, I'm going to provide a brief update on Governor Newsom's January proposal for the 2425 budget. The PowerPoint is hot off the press. It just was completed about two hours ago, so it was not included in the materials that were sent out, but we do have copies available for the public. To my right, you've received a hard copy, and we'll be reviewing it together this evening. The governor released his budget proposal on January 10th, so again, that's in part why the presentation is just now being completed. Just to orient ourselves in where we are in the state budget cycle, the kickoff of the state budget cycle really was last week. It's with the governor producing his January proposal for the upcoming 2425 fiscal year. We will receive very little information between now and May. We'll all certainly hear speculations and rumors, we'll hear about the political maneuvering taking place in Sacramento, but there will be a very little substantive update until the governor revises his budget in May. And so we call that the May revise. Each year, the governor provides his January proposal. By January 10th, he provides his May revise before May 15th. However, remember, it's not the governor who actually votes on and approves a state budget, it's the legislature. And so each time he's doing these, providing an initial proposal and then providing a revision to his proposal, it's really the governor laying out his spending priorities and his desired budget, but there is, again, a lot of political back and forth before the legislature actually will adopt a budget, and they do that by June 15th. As an aside, I was up in Sacramento back in '09, one of the, working for CDE for then state superintendent Jack O'Connell, during one of the years when the state budget was not approved until late in the fall. And it was only a couple of years after that when the state adopted a new law that says that legislatures or legislators don't get paid unless they adopt a budget by June 15th, and somehow all of the political challenges and impediments they had that caused us to have fall adoptions went away, and they always have adopted by June 15th. So they will adopt on June 15th, however, once again, it's still not over because the governor still has to sign the bill. And so in the case of this past year, the, I believe it was June 27th, the governor actually signed the budget bill that had been adopted by the legislature, but only after some final changes. And so when you were actually asked to adopt the budget for this current year, there were changes on, we asked you to adopt it on June 22nd. Legislature adopted their budget five days later, so we actually were adopting a budget before we had a finalized budget from the state. However, those are the time requirements that ed code requires us to make our decisions. So here's the big takeaway from the current place of where we are in the budget. If you recall, in 2023, you know, typical income tax filing deadline is April 15th. We received a six-month reprieve because of some declared natural disasters, primarily the flooding that took place across California in spring, winter and spring of '23. And so, again, the filing deadline was extended by six months by the feds, the state followed suit. Right before the new deadline of October 15th, they extended it another month, pretty out of the blue, until mid-November, I believe it's November 16th. And so when the state adopted their budget on June 27th, they had to make a whole bunch of budget assumptions for their revenue for the current year. We're not just talking about next year, but the current year's revenue, because they were not going to receive that revenue for about six months after adoption. As you can see in this chart, I know the print is a bit small, but California really lives on three main, the government system lives on three main sources of tax revenue. Personal income tax, corporate tax, and sales and use tax at the state level, those are the three big funding sources. And so you can see, again, personal income tax is far and away the largest funding source for the state budget, of which, again, then comes back down to us at the local level. What you see in this chart is the miss of what the enacted budget had presumed for revenue and what the governor now is expecting for revenue. And so it was on December 1st, when a few of us were up at the California School Board Association Annual Conference, that the Legislative Analyst Office released their analysis on revenues for the tax year '23. What they told us was that there was a $68 billion deficit in the governor's budget, and that's over a three-year time horizon, the current budget year, '23, '24, next budget year, '24, '25, and the budget year from a whole year ago, '22, '23. And so what I show on this chart is actually just the governor's January proposal, and so he is not using the same numbers as the LAO came out with on December 1st. The governor uses numbers that come from the Department of Finance. The legislature typically uses numbers that come from the Legislative Analyst Office, the LAO. And so right now, we're in a unique situation. It's not uncommon that the Department of Finance and Legislative Analyst Office don't agree, but the extent to which they disagree is unprecedented. Again, one is saying a $68 billion deficit, the other's saying a $38 billion deficit. But even with the governor's current budget projections, you can see, again, just how much they missed the target on revenues for those big three funding sources. So here's the key takeaway from the governor's proposal. We were expecting a bloodbath based on what the LAO came out with on December 1st. A $68 billion deficit would have far exceeded all reserves the state has on hands and would then still require current-year cuts in all likelihood, as well as cuts for '24, '25. So what the governor came out with, again, believing that there was a $30 billion reduction to the deficit, mainly because of better revenue projections, slightly in part because of a little bit of a reduction in revenues, but the big difference was that the governor's using much better revenue numbers. Because he was able to provide a budget that only assumed a $38 billion deficit or gap that needed to be plugged, he was able to use both the reserves, which, remember, education has its own reserve, which we'll, we have a slide on that in a second, but the education reserve, the general fund rainy day reserve, the Prop 2 reserve, as well as a few other really small pots of money that are set aside for particular rainy days. And then some, what he's calling belt tightening, as well as some, again, accounting creativity of what the state will do is defer payments, you know, call June payroll, actually fiscal year, July, the following year, things like that, of where they're able to, to try to make the number get to zero. I'll tell you, it's pretty risky. And so while it's welcome news, what the governor produced last week, much better news than we were expecting based on the LAO's numbers, there's a lot of uncertainty this year, and I personally think that what we're likely to see is numbers that look a lot closer to LAO than DOF once we see the May revise. So I did mention that, again, there is a standalone fund that's called, it's the Public School System Stabilization Account. He's able to balance the budget, the governor is balancing the budget based on withdrawing $3 billion in the current year, $2.7 billion next year, and so it would deplete the reserve down to about $3.8 billion. So the reserve right now is just below $10 billion for education, and he'd be exhausting about two-thirds of that just for this upcoming year. And so this says nothing about if we actually are in a multi-year challenge, which, again, the Legislative Analyst Office believes we are. So here are the major takeaways. Again, we still have a lot more information gathering, this is very, very early in the season. Tomorrow, we have our new fiscal director going to School Services California's January Budget Workshop. I'll be going to Capitol Advisors Workshop next week, and I was on a call with CSBA last week as they gave their initial look. So we're trying to get as much information from all the state resources that we can, but as I said, this certainly creates a lot more uncertainty for school districts up and down the state during this budget build season of February, March, and April, when we really aren't going to have a good sense until May and June. Unfortunately, there are legal requirements that we must hit that come before when we're going to get this additional information. So one example would be, as a reminder for the community, the fiscal stabilization plan that the board adopted last month that referenced the potential reduction in workforce by 29 FTE, full-time equivalents, that was, that was a fiscal document, that was not an HR document, that was not actually a, there was no decision that was made on that day that we are actually going to eliminate 29 positions. What it was, was that we said that right now, based on the current numbers, based on current revenue expenditures, that would be what we'd have to implement in order to have a balanced budget by the third year. We're taking all this information in, January proposal, we're looking at our expenditures through the years to update that. Our next deadline will be by March 15th. Resolution will come to this board, where you will actually be given a number of FTE for potential reduction or elimination of positions. That still isn't the period when anyone gets laid off, that's only a legal requirement for notification that someone is at risk. So I can say with certainty that that resolution is not going to match up to the fiscal stabilization plan that was a fiscal document adopted a month ago. And what's adopted as a resolution in March is not going to necessarily line up to the resolution in May that you will be asked to adopt, which is when individuals actually are, become notified that their positions are being eliminated. So we're very early in this process, but again, we have state requirements that we must follow as far as timelines. The key question I've identified and I've already talked a bit about is really, you know, is the Department of Finance, is it 68 billion or is it 38 billion? Because the gap, you know, if it's closer to the LAO's numbers than the Because the gap, you know, if it's closer to the L A O's numbers than the the pretty decent news we received from the governor last week. Is not going to hold strong in the months to come. But again, as of right now, schools were largely spared from deficit impacts this year. We have no method of actually fixing a structural deficit long term at the state level right now. And the state and the legislature, the L A O and the D O F, both are not currently anticipating a recession in any form in twenty four or twenty five. So even a mild recession will change the revenue projections. But here's, here's probably the most important slide for us at the local level. And I apologize for how small it is. Again, we've got copies in front of you, they'll be on the website and they're, they're available for the audience. The key headlines that you're seeing in the news right now is that education is being spared cuts. The challenge is, one, that's a little bit of a, it's not sharing the full picture. Because education as a whole across the state is looking at a significant cut in the order of about ten billion dollars. Prop ninety eight is being dropped in the current year by ten billion dollars and next year by a little bit less. The reason that they're claiming that education is not being touched is that declining enrollment is the way that they're saying on a per pupil basis, you're not losing that much money. But when we have enrollment decline, any district that's experiencing enrollment decline is absolutely seeing a significant loss in dollars. And so for Burbank Unified, our funded average daily attendance, remember, we're not funded on enrollment, but something that's actually a factor of enrollment, which is attendance. We're looking at about four percent decline next year. So even if we're held harmless, you know, we aren't growing, but we're not seeing a decline in in revenue at the state level. We still are going to be looking at a significant decline in revenue just because of A D A. But here's what's the the big takeaway actually from January. And I'm not sure again, if I have a, the ability to point to these numbers. When the the legislature adopted the current budget in June, they provide us with COLAs for the out years. COLA is a cost of living adjustment. It's what they are saying they're going to be raising the base factor for local control funding formula, how much they're going to raise it by each year. At, in June, the state told us that we'd be getting a three point nine four percent before adjusting for fluctuations in enrollment. But a three point nine four percent COLA. What they're now telling us as of last week with the governor's budget is it's going to be a point seven six percent COLA. What's that mean for us? It means when you adopt the budget this year in June, we assumed next year that we would have about four point eight million dollars more in revenue. Than what we are now looking at from the the governor's proposal. The good news is that we start to adjust our budget that came to you in December because of what we were hearing from the L A O. And so we already accounted for much of this loss, but not all of it. And so again, we, it's not a small thing. It's something that most media outlets are not covering appropriately when they're saying that the education is is not taking a cut. We're taking a huge cut from what they told us to plan on for our out year budgets. And the challenge is that these numbers roll forward. So if you don't give me the three point nine four percent you told me to expect for next year, that is money that never comes back. And so that loss rolls. And so you can see the impact again, I apologize for the small print, but on a a per student basis. Next year, we're supposed to get eleven thousand, three fifty nine approximately as a blended rate for each student through our primary funding mechanism, L C F F. Instead, because of the reduced COLA, it's only going to be eleven thousand, twelve dollars. So that's a three hundred and forty dollar, three hundred and forty seven dollar reduction on a per child basis. When we have fourteen thousand kids, that's a lot of money. But again, it rolls forward. And so look at how much of a difference it is by that third year in twenty six, twenty seven. Based on the governor's numbers and the legislature's numbers in June, we were anticipating twelve thousand, one oh seven. Instead, it's eleven, six, six, four. That's almost a, that's over four hundred and fifty dollar loss. And so again, when you roll that together, what the governor came out with last week, even though the press is telling us that education is not being cut. What we see is that even before we account for our enrollment decline, that actually L C F F in the out years is going down by seventeen million dollars for us. So again, we were expecting horrible news. We got less bad news, but wasn't good news what came out last week by any stretch. It still is going to be larger cuts than we were anticipating based on this new information. Yes.
And stay tuned, it's going to get more interesting.
Correct.
Quick question. Anything we, any kind of a money that we've received or are receiving from the state during the time when things were. That we're expecting governor to take back because of the budgetary stuff?
That's an excellent, excellent question. So I have one more slide, I think, if we can get the slides back up.
It's too sad.
Or, yeah, here. So my last slide is, and this is I, it's very small print, but I do attribute the source here. It comes directly from the C S B A covering the L A O's response to Governor Newsom's budget last week. So again, the Legislative Analyst Office, the source, the nonpartisan institution that is responsible for providing numbers to the legislature. They respond to the governor's budget and they, you can see their quote, I'll actually read it in its entirety here. And its explanation of the differences between the two projected budget deficits. The L A O stated, it's largely due to differences in what we consider to be the baseline changes. The largest of these changes impacts schools and community colleges. Describing the governor's approach as plausible but not, or plausible but optimistic, plausible but not very likely. The L A O writes that the governor relies on higher budget revenue projections to the tune of fifteen billion dollars. A reasonable dip into the state reserve and significant spending related solutions, which may pose challenges. Concerningly, the L A O highlights from the governor's budget lacks a plan for implementing proposed reductions to schools and community colleges. Again, this is the body who's telling the legislature how to create a budget. They're saying the governor's plan specifically fails to address schools and the fact that there needs to be reductions in school funding in order to make their budget work. And other solutions that are unlike the yield anticipated savings. So here's what the L A O is making, five recommendations to the legislature as it begins its review of the governor's budget. And the reason I am again, answering your question by going to this is that you can see that the the fourth thing down is maximize reductions in one time spending. So we received two large funding sources. This district received more than twenty million dollars a year ago in the form of two one time grants. One was called the Learning Recovery Block Grant. The other was called the Arts Music and Structural Materials Discretionary Block Grant. They were both at the chopping block this past spring before they adopted the current budget. The governor had actually said that he was going to cut one of the grants by fifty, forty eight percent. And the other one by about thirty percent. Together, it would have been a loss of about seven million dollars in revenue to the district. That was the thing that changed on June twenty seventh. At the last minute, the legislature actually held strong and said, no, we're not cutting this one time funding. And they fully restored, well, they nearly fully restored the discretionary block grant. The arts music instruction, or I'm sorry, the learning recovery block grant, they didn't fully restore. They said, we want to, we don't currently have the money. And so we're just going to stay a, a budget priority to make sure it's fully funded in the future. Not sure what that means. Certainly it means it's not going to be a priority moving forward at this point. And so I actually specifically asked C S B A last week, does this mean the discretionary block grant? That one that's really critical to us, has the most flexibility, could we be looking at a cut to that? Even though they gave us the money a full year ago. They gave it to us already, the money has gone out the state's, you know, coffers into our local treasury. And and they said, we fully expect that there's going to be a loss, we just don't know how much. So it is very likely that there's going to be cuts to the one time funding sources that we've already received and already made plans for. No, we've not fully spent. So that's, that's their justification is that when they gave us this funding, the Learning Recovery Block Grant was supposed to, they said that you can spend it over. It was either a four or five year timeline. Discretionary block grant was over a three or four year timeline. And so because these were intended to be multi year expenditures, even though there is only a one time funding source. They're saying, well, no responsible district will have already spent the money for the third and fourth year. That's true, we haven't spent it, but we certainly have been banking, we've been planning on it in order to maintain programs. So again, they, the the L A O is telling the legislature right now, as far as the governor's budget goes, plan for lower revenues than what he's actually said. They're saying to maintain a similar reserve withdrawal, meaning that again, don't, don't ease up on the withdrawals from the reserves. Instead, you have to somehow otherwise balance the budget when there will be reduced revenues. And the way they say do that is to again, develop a plan for school and community college funding. That means reducing our funding, cut one time funding and apply a higher bar for discretionary proposals. That's what we're looking at.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cantor, also for the viewers just watching this, some of them might be, this might be their first time they're looking at budget. For clarification purposes, I want you to address the power of the governor, his ability to take the money if he wishes. Because people always think, well, you know, it's your money, you should balance it where the state really is, you know, ultimately. The budgetary decisions are made at the state level.
Right, exactly. As President Weisberg said earlier, so much of our funding does come in restricted revenue sources. So again, we, we had this great thing. In fact, we just celebrated the ten year anniversary of the Local Control Funding Formula and Local Control Accountability Plan. It was one of Governor Brown's greatest achievements. So he said that he believes that those who are at the local level should be the decision makers about what the needs are of their community. However, that has radically changed, you know, it was never fully realized his vision, but it certainly has radically changed now a lot of restrictions. The state is one dictating how a lot of the funds can be used and they also are able to pull them back at their discretion.
Also for clarification, can you just tell our viewers that the city and the school budget are like oranges and apples? That on, people think it's the same budget, we're getting the same funding.
Yeah, exactly. So our funding, and if I may, I'm going to expand beyond that question just slightly. A lot of people also think, especially those from out of state, that our funding comes primarily from property tax revenues. That is not the case in California. So let's say something really great happens that causes all of the property values in Burbank to go up by ten percent. And there's also an increase in tax revenue as a result, we would not see a single new dollar. Because that goes up to the state and is and considered as part of the funding allocation through L C F F. And so our funding comes exclusively through, or again, nearly exclusively. Our budget this year is about two hundred and twenty billion dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty million.
Really?
Billion, billions at the state level, millions at the local level. Two hundred and twenty million, hundred and seventy million of that is L C F F. Again, twenty million ish is from various other state revenue sources, a very small amount of it's from federal level. So, you know, well over eighty percent of our funding is coming from the state through these funding formulas. Which is very different in the way that the cities are funded. Cities are funded far more locally, a lot of it based on sale and use tax revenue. But a very different funding mechanism than public debt in California.
I'm just curious also, what percentage of homes in the city of Burbank are protected under Prop thirteen? That's another thing people might not know.
All homes are. And so again, just for for those at home who may be watching, in the mid seventies, state of California passed Proposition thirteen. Which capped the ability to tax property values at one percent of their assessed value. Assessed value, unlike in most other states, I just moved back here from Texas where each year I had the joy of going down to the county tax assessor. And arguing about my property tax evaluation, because every year it's revalued and they raise my taxes, even though I never sold my house, I'm having to pay more taxes. California doesn't do that. So Prop thirteen did cap that. They said that we're going to cap it based on the purchase price, in essence, there's a few qualifiers to that. And then the most it can go up from the one percent of your purchase price is a two percent rate escalator year. So we have a lot of homes that were bought for three or four hundred thousand dollars now are a one point five million dollar home. But the homeowner is paying as if it were still a four hundred thousand dollar home. And that's why again, California doesn't fund education based on property taxes like many other states, but rather based on the state formula.
I appreciate you explaining that because again, I'm sure my colleagues also hear this question all the time. It's a very different mechanism.
This conversation makes me think, as we get closer to having some semblance of a finalized budget. I think it could be really useful for us to do some sort of town hall or community conversation. Because I do think, I mean, it's unbelievably complex, period. And, you know, we want our community to be more involved, we need our community to be more invested. And I think it's, it's, we should be thinking about how we can, and you're really good at explaining things. And I think it'd be really helpful for our community to understand some of the small things like, you know, we don't have the, we don't, we're not funded by the city. We have a separate budget. And then the larger things, the sort of bigger picture things, I think it'd be really helpful for our community to understand. Because I do think that people assume that more money is coming to schools based on property tax or what have you than actually is. And so I think it'd be, the more people know, the better it is, no matter what. So I think it could be a really interesting thing for us to discuss later on down the line, perhaps when we have something more concrete. But I just wanted to sort of plant the seed for further conversation about that.
Ms. Ponsor Kamkar.
Thank you. How, if at all, are we incorporating this into our upcoming L cap meetings? Because I know those have been tough budget discussions and are a public process, community driven process. Are we trying to incorporate these numbers there or is it way too early to even try?
Yeah, it's a great question. So just a reminder, L cap is funded based on our students who meet one of a few demographic factors. Low income, English, low income as designated by free introduced meal qualification. Low, or English language learner, homeless, foster youth. Those are the four, yeah. So if a child qualifies under one of those designations, then we get a twenty percent premium, a twenty percent add on. From that number I showed you earlier, from that base grant amount. And so the reason that we already were making changes to L cap, the reason that the L cap budget is going down is purely a product of declining enrollment. Fewer overall absolute students who are being designated or qualifying as one of those four attributes. And the fact that we were able to avoid some of the, we're, it's fair to feel like it's a kind of a cliff that we're experiencing financially when it comes to L cap. It's because we did have carryover for a couple of years that we were able to draw down that allowed us to to have it be kind of a, to have it be not. A annual reduction over many years, but rather allow us to maintain for as long as we could. And now at this point, with our new three year cycle, we're forced to right size it based on the actual revenue coming in. So what's the impact of this? Again, because the government, the supplemental dollars are a percentage of that base grant. When that base grant COLA goes down, that means that L cap dollars will go down also. The numbers though, that we're using were based on a one percent COLA. So it wasn't using that three point nine four that, you know, we just had a few new hires to our district that came from other districts. They all said that they were using three point nine four still in December because it was just too late to make changes. Fortunately, we were able to make that change on the revenue side. And so we already dropped it down to the one percent. That's the number that we're using for supplemental. So it's true that our number will be, it's likely the number is going to drop a little bit more. But I think it's a little bit too early for us to make any changes. I think we have a good number right now using the one percent COLA.
Ms. Tabit? And then Dr. Agakania.
President Weisberg.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your thought of schooling the community on how schools are funded. But I've, in the last year, spoken with many assembly members, elected officials, who don't know how schools are funded.
I know, look at, look at how schools are funded.
And, and when, when they find out, they're quite shocked.
Indeed.
And so I think that's also the responsibility of elected officials who do get it.
No question.
To start talking to.
No question.
Our folks in Sacramento who represent us to make them understand that it's probably not working really well. And maybe we could do something different.
And I think to that point, Ms. Tabit, not only us, but the more formed populace can then also advocate legislators. So I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, it just, it wasn't enough to do the community, it's the people who are making decisions need to know too.
No, no question.
And while we throw that in there, we'll throw in person STIRS repayment too.
We were waiting for when that was going to happen.
You do a great job.
Somebody's bingo card.
Reminding the community of that. I didn't include that as a slide, but that was another thing that again, people don't see, but what snuck in there was an assumption that PERS rates are going to continue to go up more than they were on June thirty with the budget adoption. So.
Wasn't this the year that they jumped a little bit too?
Oh, they jumped this year and they're jumping every year, but the jump is even larger now with the governor's proposal than where it was a month ago. So STIRS is staying constant, STIRS is nineteen point one percent. That one's not the one that's changing right now, although again, they could change it at the state level. PERS though, is right now around twenty six percent, plus or minus half a percent. And and they just said that it was going to go up by like another half percent above what we're expecting. So PERS will be in the next four years, PERS will be at thirty percent. So for, that means every non-credentialed teacher, credentialed teachers, certificate teachers and administrators are in the STIRS system, the state teacher retirement system. All other school employees are in the public employment retirement system, the the PERS system, which many other government workers are in. That for every dollar that we pay. we pay in salary, 30 cents on top of that is required by the state to be contributed to their PERS account.
And what's, go ahead.
I was gonna say, do you remember the end date, when it's supposed to be fully repaid, and then we can stop?
I don't think they're even pretending that there's an end date at this point.
I think in the very beginning, it was like 30, 45 or something.
At one point, we're giving estimates, but.
Well, and I think what's increasingly, what's frustrating about this, too, and then we're gonna, I think we need to move on, is that it demonizes something that we should be doing, right, which is supporting our pensions and retirement for our educators and for educational professionals. And instead of, right, instead of the state doing their part, the onus then falls almost directly onto us. And so it becomes this frustrating moment where you get angry about something that you know is the right thing to be doing, but yet it is, it cripples you financially. And that shouldn't be the situation we find ourselves in, because we know that our teachers and our classified staff deserve the pension that they're paying into, but it creates the situation where we are, you know, angry about having to do it.
Well, our teachers are paying more also
Our teachers are paying more, yeah.
And that, I just don't understand why, and it wasn't anyone's fault, no one did anything wrong or bad, it was the economy
Sure.
Tanked, and they made, they lost revenue, from my understanding. Am I on the right soapbox today?
Yeah, yeah, PERS made actuarial assumptions based on.
Right. And they lost a ton of money. So the, the thing that bugs me, Madam President, is that kids today have to pay for that, when most of them, 2008, so about 2008 it was, we started in 2013, I think, repaying it back, it's 10 years later. So those kids in ninth and 10th grade weren't even in school when this problem started, and they've been affected by it their whole entire school year.
School.
Yep.
Dr. Agakanyan.
One more question. So I know that community colleges are also having big issues with, you know, enrollment. But I've also seen this huge surge in dual immersion. Does that generate extra money for the districts that get involved in there, or not? Enrollment, I mean.
Yeah, it was like immersion.
Dual enrollment as in with the community colleges?
Yes.
It depends on how it's structured, but yes, at the heart of.
Not for the college, it helps them, but the school.
So there was legislation that passed around 2016 that allowed certain types of dual enrollment classes for the community college to collect their FTE, I believe that's what their equivalent for ADA is called, and districts to collect their ADA. There's a lot of districts that have tried it, it's hard to do in the implementation phase, the, again, there's certain requirements around the type of dual enrollment classes that you're offering. But yes, we can offer dual enrollment, that we could collect ADA while the community college is collecting their, their equivalent.
I'm telling you, it's, we just had a district, 1,000, 1,500 students.
Yeah.
Just signed them up, dual enrollment.
Absolutely.
Thank you, this was a heavy lift for you tonight, sir.
Sorry.
No, we're all sad now. And we're going to move on. So we are going to move on to, but truly thank you, that's an enormous amount of work and an enormous amount of time spent for telling us very sobering information. 11A, adoption of Resolution 16 proclaiming the month of February 2024 in recognition of National Black History Month. Can I have a motion in a second? No, go ahead. I can read it if you want. Yeah.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 16 proclaiming the month of February 2024 in recognition of the National Black History Month in the Burbank Unified School District as presented.
Shar, you want a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the vote carries. 3-0. We are missing our friend, but we still make quorum. Okay, we are going to show the power, we have a PowerPoint, and then wanted to, are you going to read?
Yeah.
Oh, great. So quick backs-back information, something that I asked that we started to do is when we do resolutions that lend themselves to it, each month, we're going to ask one of our amazing library coordinators to offer up some book suggestions for all three grade levels, to help people read some more, learn some more, grow some more. So Ms. Julie Grenay from John Burrows High School fantastically invested an enormous amount of time talking with the other library coordinators to come up with these suggestions. I'm super thankful to her for all the time she took. She couldn't be here because she's helping run Poetry Out Loud, so she's doing something else for us, and can't be here for this, but I'm excited to hear.
So thank you to our board for giving us this opportunity to participate in this national tradition of recognizing our, our black citizens and who contribute so much that's so valuable and, and important in society. And what that means for us as schools is that we encourage all of our Burbank schools to recognize and to celebrate these contributions in culturally relevant activities and programming. And books are a big piece of that. So I'm going to take you through a little book walk, and we'll look at some book jackets and some recommended titles. And as we pull that up, big thanks, as mentioned, to our library coordinators who just do an excellent job researching and including diverse and inclusive books as a routine part of our acquisitions and holdings and making resources available. So some titles that have been mentioned as favorites for sharing during Black History Month and throughout the year. For the youngest set first, I'll show you some titles. So I think we'll all remember our ABC books, A stands for, and B stands for. And the ABCs of Black History, as seen here, is a great one that our kiddos, our young ones, really enjoy. A couple others that are really beloved are pictured here, Nell Plants a Tree and Ron's Big Mission. So be encouraged, if you aren't familiar with these books and you have young kiddos, these are available as holdings to be checked out in our school libraries, and I'm sure our community libraries as well. For our upper elementary and middle grade students, there is a particular author who is just really beloved, and there are a multitude of books by bestselling author Jaclyn Woodson. She's written over 40 books. So here are just a few of her titles. And you can see the many awards that she's received. She's well-beloved and, and recognized for all these various titles. So there's a lot of options to consider with Jaclyn Woodson, and these are especially appropriate, again, for upper elementary and middle grade students. Our high school students tend to gravitate a little bit more to realistic fiction. And so Dear Martin, Dear Justice are examples. Long Way Down is another example. Dr. Paramo just read this one. So if you're looking for a recommendation or a book review, it's always fun to strike up a conversation with the superintendent anyways. Now is your chance. This is some great material. And this year, we are piloting an advanced placement African-American studies class. And they are using some great nonfiction books based on interviews and research as well. And these are those titles. So the publishing houses across the country have done an incredible amount of work making sure that all of our important populations and people of color and all of the various times when we have to recognize and celebrate cultures, we have our books to join us in this process. So there's many great treasures to be found. These are just a few that we're sharing with you. And thank you again for this opportunity. We invite our community to celebrate Black History Month with us in February.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if you do the honor of reading the resolution, because I
Surely, surely.
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas the first event was celebrated during a week in February 1926 encompassing the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African-Americans. Whereas in 1976, the week-long celebration was extended to the entire month of February. And whereas National Black History Month is a national tradition established in response to the inadequate and oftentimes biased depiction of black history in African-American communities and history books and schools' curricula of the era. And whereas black citizens helped develop our nation in countless ways, those recognized, unrecognized, and unrecorded. And whereas the contributions of black citizens and scientists, inventors, educators, farmers, homemakers, and explorers of earth and sky have been recognized annually during National Black History Month. And whereas black citizens have participated and continue to in every American effort to secure, protect, and maintain the essence and substance of American democracy. And whereas National Black History Month is a vehicle to promote culturally, cultural relevant activities like the many events planned at district school sites, college campuses, public libraries, businesses, and nonprofits throughout the Burbank area that will offer excellent opportunities to focus the energy, attention, commitment, and action of the entire community in closing health, opportunity, and achievement gaps for black students and families. And whereas not only during the month of February 2024, but throughout the remainder of this year, it is important that we as a district seek to understand how to thoughtfully and holistically address African-American disparities in information sharing and outcomes in order to move towards greater equity in our educational system and the greater community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize February 2024 as Black History Month and supports the important work and services provided by schools throughout the district and organizations throughout the nation. And be it further resolved that the superintendent will encourage all schools in the Burbank Unified School District to recognize and celebrate National Black History Month through culturally relevant activities and programs. I hereby certify, this was approved and adopted by the Board of Education of the Burbank Unified School District on the 18th day of January 2024. We did vote. We're pretty sure you would have voted in favor. Okay, excellent, that is wonderful. We're going to move on to 11B, adoption of Resolution 17 proclaiming the week of February 5th, 2024 through February 9th, 2024 as school counseling week.
President Weisberg.
Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 17 proclaiming February 5th, 2024 through February 9th, 2024 as school counseling week in the Burbank Unified School District as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan. Yeah, huh. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Resolution 17 proclaiming the week of February 5th, 2024 through February 9th, 2024 as school counseling week. Whereas school counselors are employed by the Burbank Unified School District to help students reach their full potential as part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to self-awareness and personal development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas staff, students, and parents are encouraged to recognize the efforts of the school counselor. And whereas the Board of Education of the Burbank Unified School District expresses strong support and deep gratitude to the past and present counselors for their commitment and dedication to the students and staff of the Burbank Unified School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the week of February 5th, 2024 through February 9th, 2024 be recognized as school counseling week in the Burbank Unified School District. Thank you.
Beautifully read. We'll move on to 11C, approval of 2022, 2023 school accountability report cards. Can I have a motion in a second?
Madam Chair, I
Yeah, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve 2022, 2023 school accountability report cards prepared in 2023, 2024 as presented.
I will second.
Moved by Dr. Agakanyan, seconded by Ms. Tabit. Uh, yes.
Um, so I just noticed on the, on these, that there's some data that wasn't completed specifically around the, the cast, the state testing and chronic absenteeism, suspensions, expulsions. I only spot-checked a couple of schools and noticed that, but I wasn't sure if that was intentional.
So the CDE is going to be releasing information and the data files, and by law, I have to go ahead and have this posted by February 1. So once we get complete data from the CDE, California Department of Education, then it'll be populated and then we'll repost.
Okay, I promised not to ask this same question next year, because as you said that, I remembered asking it last year.
I was gonna say, I thought I asked it last year.
Poor Peter.
Poor Dr. Knappig. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries 4-0. All right. Moving to 11D, first reading of the Dual Immersion Master Plan, can I have a motion in a second?
Dr. Weisberg.
Oh, go ahead, you go.
Okay. Dr. Weisberg, I move that the Board of Education facilitate in the first reading of the proposed revision of the Dual Immersion Master Plan. I don't know why we're voting on it.
I was literally saying the same thing. Dr. Paramo, why is this something that was listed as something we're voting on? Isn't it just a discussion around the master plan?
Just a first reading.
It is.
JK, no vote.
Second.
I, I removed my, my, yes, I rescind my motion.
Dr. Knappig and a very patient Jen Goldenberg.
So this evening, we're here to share with you just a little bit about the Dual Immersion Master Plan, the process that we went through, the goals that we have for the plan, a little bit about the plan, and then also listening to the feedback from the community as well as yourselves regarding the plan, because we do plan on bringing you back for a second reading at some point in time.
Great.
So Jennifer Goldenberg is here, she's our coordinator of English learner programs, and she's going to be the primary presenter for the program.
Hello, President Weisberg, board members, Superintendent John Paramo, and all my wonderful coworkers, and those in the community, thanks for hanging out and staying. This is, do we have it? Pardon? No? We're not finding the PowerPoint. Okay, so I'll just hold it up, old school, I'm kidding. People can't see it. So the, so we have two English language development programs in our district. One is called Structured English Immersion, that master plan went to the school board, it's gone to the school board several times because it's been revised. Then this one, Dual Immersion is the other program for English learners. We also have, it's, the class should be half and half, native English speakers, native Spanish speakers. So the native English speakers, even though they're not English learners, they're Spanish learners. So they benefit from the program, too. What should I do about the goals if we don't have the, okay, great. So in 2016, we convened a committee and had, and wrote, had a master plan written for us by a consultant who worked with the Association of Two-Way Dual Language Education. And she, when she returned the master plan to me, there were errors in it, like other districts were named, it was kind of like a copy-paste problem. That's where the seven periods that, that Tom Crowther mentioned, it was because there were certain parts of it that had not been changed for Burbank Unified, because we knew that we only had six periods at the time. So anyway, that gave us a chance to work on it. And then I guess the school board changed the way they wanted master plans to read, so we had to add goals at the front, which in the past we hadn't. So that gave us a chance then, because by the time we revisited the master plan, we had so many, we had like kids in high school last year. So in ninth grade, our inaugural class was in ninth grade. So it was wonderful to have a broader range of parent involvement. And we had a lot of parents there in the committee meetings. We didn't have as many staff. And so I sat with, this fall, I sat down with all of our Dual Immersion teachers in K through eight, and talked through the program, talked to them about the goals, they gave me feedback, and we finished up our revisions. It was a very long process, I realize. It was a very long process, I realize. So the goals of the program, of course, are to develop high levels of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in both academic English and academic Spanish. It's to develop positive attitudes towards those who speak a second language and originate from various cultures. It is to promote self-esteem and lifelong leadership skills. So those are the goals of the program. And then in terms of measurable, you know, SMART goals, we have goals for, the first goal and the second goal are side by side on the PowerPoint. And if you're at home, if you download it from the website, you'll see from the Burbank Unified website that we have a goal for English language proficiency for our English learners and Spanish language proficiency for our Spanish learners. And the baseline data from this last spring, not quite a year ago, we had 81.6% of our English learners scoring a four on the California test for the ELD program called the LPAC. And for the Spanish learners, 87.5% of them scored advanced fluency or higher on our local measure, which was the FLOSOM, the Foreign Language Oral Skills Evaluation Matrix. So we say we're going to increase by 3% each year. We're already starting with really high numbers. So, and I think that speaks volumes to our program. Then Goal Three is Bilinguality in English and Spanish. So this is one of the pathways towards the Seal of Bilinguality is earning a Bilinguality Attainment Recognition Award in eighth grade where students have to prove their proficiency in both languages and in listening and speaking and reading and writing. So in the fall, or not the fall, in the spring, we had 86% of the students in eighth grade receiving that award. They also all received certificates for their participation in the program because to hang in there through middle school when, you know how middle school is. It's, yes, exactly. Emily, you teach them, or Ms. Weisberg, sorry. So they, anyway, the Seal of Bilinguality is Goal Number Four, and that's for high school. So we would like 100% of our students who are, who have participated in the Dual Immersion program while in high school to earn the Seal of Bilinguality. We don't have a baseline because they're only in 10th grade. So I will say that I looked at their grades at the 10-week mark in high school. They were all doing well. And these kids are amazing. And it's really awesome if you haven't got, visited a Dual Immersion classroom where you go in and you speak to a kid. And we come with, you know, assumptions, like if somebody looks at me and they, and they see my last name, they're like, oh, she doesn't, she just speaks English. Well, no, también hablo español. Entonces, when you go into a classroom with those students, it's awesome to hear them all speaking in both languages. They don't all speak in Spanish. The Spanish learners and the English learners don't speak in the other language right away. It takes a couple of years to develop oral proficiency or fluency. And so, okay, those are the goals. And then we have our pathways. Well, the instructional design for Kinder through fifth is, we have a 90-10 model in kindergarten where 90% of the instructional day, including specials, like that means going to the library, going to the computer lab, that kind of stuff, is all in Spanish. And then 10% of the day is academic English language development. And in order to keep the languages separate, at least in K1 and 2, because those are critical, critical years, the Kinder, first and second grade teachers switch classes for English. And in the beginning, it's really funny because the Kinder teacher, the Kinder's students don't really know that their teachers speak English. Yes?
Senora Sanchez tells them, when she has them for English in first grade, I learned English over the summer, guys, so now I can teach you English, which delighted my daughter to no end. And she's not telling her younger brother that Senora Sanchez can speak English so that he doesn't know.
That's great. A lot of schools that have Dual Immersion would have two strands. So they'd have two teachers or one strand, but two teachers per grade level since we didn't have the, the space at any of our elementary schools to have, what is it essentially, at 12 classrooms, right? They, that's why there's one at McKinley and one at Disney instead of being on the same campus. And so in order to accommodate that or keep the languages separate, that's why they switch classes and they, I just met with them yesterday with the teachers and they're great and they are really just, they worked really hard on curriculum development and other things. We had to, because of the pandemic, kind of back off a little bit on our PD, district-wide. We didn't have a lot of meetings between the Dual Immersion teachers. They, of course, were meeting with their grade level, the English strand grade level counterparts are at their own schools, but they weren't meeting with each other necessarily. So this year, that's been my goal, is to bring them together more and allow them time to develop curriculum or to, you know, really go through what we do have. Like FOS is our new science project or program, whatever. They have to get used to it and talk to each other about what they have. Believe it or not, I know somebody mentioned adding another language. I would love, I would love if every single school had like 10% of the day in another language. That would be amazing. It is hard to find a lot of materials in Spanish and English learners. Pardon? Quality materials, that's true. Quality materials, that makes sense. A lot of the translations that we've run into with our adoptions have such a high, precise, sorry, level of Spanish that it's, it's like higher than what we would expect of the English only or the English strand. So like in this, the social science in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's hard. It's hard for those kids. And they've been studying the language for six years. It's just the, the, the translation is not equivalent. What they are teaching in each language is just, anyway. So they need time to go through those things and to see, okay, how can I chunk this material to make it more accessible, more understandable to this? And what else can I bring in? What other supplemental materials can I use? It is huge to be a Dual Immersion teacher. It's just like it's double the work for the kids, it's double the work for the teachers. So then we go to the slide about the pathways in middle school. In the beginning, we were hoping that we could have a zero period and it would be a class that they could take and then that, not necessarily Spanish. I know we offer Spanish one zero period, but if we were to offer the Spanish for Dual Immersion in zero period, we'd need three teachers because we need science, or Spanish for sixth grade, Spanish for Spanish speakers one, and Spanish for Spanish speakers two. And to find any teachers who have their BCLAD, the Bilingual Cross-Cultural Language and Development Certification in our state, in our state, it's very hard. I was just looking at statistics earlier today because I'm like, why is it so hard to find the teachers? Well, Prop 227 happened in 1998. And at that point, we had around 1,200 to 1,800 teachers per year getting their bilingual certifications. By the time that Prop 58 passed in 2016, we had about 700 teachers a year. So to go from 1,200 to 700, or at the top, I guess it was 1,800, that's huge. And the amount of districts reporting in 2016 when they, when Prop 58 happened and it made it easier to have Dual Immersion programs, it wasn't as restricted as Prop 227. In that time, 53% of districts across our state reported that they already had a teacher shortage. And they projected a teacher shortage of 87%. So the fact that we have a hard time finding content area teachers or even multiple subject teachers who also have their BCLAD, we have plenty of teachers who are bilingual, but there are extra classes. It's like three or four additional tests that they have to take. I had, was meeting with the World Language Teachers, not fall of 2023, but fall of 2022. They were, they were like, yeah, I would love to teach history in Spanish or whatever at the high school level. And I'm like, oh my God, that'd be amazing. But they would have to not only take two or three tests, they would have to then also take a course in how, in the instruction for that content area, right? Looking at Dr. Pramo because he knows about the credential stuff way more than I do. I could look at Sarah because she does too. So anyway, sorry. The point being that it's a challenge to get qualified teachers. It's a challenge to get qualified, what did you call it? Quality materials. So in middle school, we, the kids can take two classes. So they're essentially choosing a Spanish class as their elective. And some of them are great with that. They're fine with that. Some of them would rather be taking another elective. So we say, okay, you can still be in the program, but you still need to have at least a social science class in Spanish. So you, you need to have at least one class in Spanish. And if we had, in the original, original master plan, we had said we would add math if we could find a credential teacher who had a single subject math credential with the BCLAD. As I explained, that's very difficult. Sarah's like, uh, nope. So they're like a unicorn. And so unfortunately, we only have two classes. Some districts in the past, like even Glendale, would bring in teachers on work visas for a couple of years. And then, so there was like a constant turnover of teachers. And not saying that we wouldn't be open to talking about it, but I, I'm not sure if it would be worth it. I, I don't know. We, we could have discussions. No problem. Pathways in high school. So when students are in eighth grade, the end of eighth grade, Mr. Reyes comes over from Burrows and he does an assessment, oral language and written language, and then scores it on a rubric and determines where they would be best placed, either in Spanish III or Spanish for Spanish speakers II, depending, or AP Spanish language. And in the beginning, we thought that if we could have those two classes in Spanish and maybe add math, then our kids would all be ready for AP. But in trying to accommodate families and children who wanted to take an elective and so they went down to only one class in Spanish, not all of them are qualifying to go into AP. So, and that's okay because AP is really difficult when you're 14. There's like a lot of history you need to know, world history and US history and, well, actually no, world history, sorry. I'm just going back to what I've been told. So then after AP Spanish language comes AP Spanish literature. And this is the first time we've offered it, isn't it? This first year. And it's because of Dual Immersion, because we have the kids who we've said we're going to bring this pathway all the way through high school. And then we're partnering with the community colleges, with LA Valley College, I believe, to provide another Spanish course in 11th grade and another one in 12th grade. Or the kids can say, I've done however many years of Spanish now, let me take French or let me take ASL or whatever. So it's up to them. So the Seal of Bilinguality is open to any child, whether they've been in Dual Immersion or not. But the students will, in our Dual Immersion program, once they hit the AP Spanish language level, will be qualifying for it well before their 12th grade year. So the, in the master plan, it delineates the different qualifications or the different measures and things that the students have to meet in order to get the Seal of Bilinguality. And it changed as in October, as in three months ago. The state all of a sudden said, oh, we're changing it and you have to implement it for your graduation in 2024. So it raised the grade point average that you have to have in Spanish classes or in English classes. But it also gave that as you can either take four years of Spanish, so our seventh and eighth grade would count for our DI kids. You can take the four language, four years in the language, have a B average and get your, your, the Seal of Bilinguality, or you can take AP Spanish language and get it that way. But you also have to prove you're bilingual in English. And so it's a B average in your English classes for four years. Oh, so you know what? I just realized, I misspoke because they will know, we will know if they're bilingual in Spanish faster than the English because we have to wait until 12th grade English. They could do that, or they can take the CASP in 11th grade or take an AP English test. So there's, there's a few more pathways in English. And yeah, so that's, that's what's happening in, for Dual Immersion, and that's what's outlined in our master plan. I'm sorry, it's 10:15.
I have a question. I wonder, thank you so much.
Is that okay?
I think I wonder about, and this is, this is perhaps a longer conversation, where the sort of disconnect is between parents asking for like more meetings and more interaction and more sort of like feedback is coming from? Because it's like, I, I know in seeing your response today, Dr. Knappig, you're like, well, we have these two meetings coming up this month. And so I wonder if some of it may have been like a byproduct of COVID that we haven't really been able to like pick back up again. But I think it'd be helpful just for me to better understand where that concern is coming from.
Unfortunately, with many of the transitions that got put onto the back burner, and I know that we are ramping it up now between Jennifer and I and like the Disney principal, the McKinley principal, the principal over at Huerta, and then John Burrows, of course, too. So we are in the process of ramping it up. So we do have plans because we have topics we have to go over. As an example, I've got to share about summer school plans.
Sure.
For English learners. And once again, that's been put on pause due to transitions and COVID and also lack of teachers.
Right.
Who want to work. But those kinds of things, we're going to start rolling out more and more and more and having these more regular meetings.
Great.
Because we have to, as well as the data piece too.
Right.
Now we have regular data coming in. We're back on track on that too. So we definitely are going to be having more meetings.
And how do we communicate, like how are we communicating with families that we're getting back on track and all these meetings are coming up and like we're sort of righting the ship? How have we been communicating that to everybody?
So that's going out as part of our communication with this January 30th meeting. Because on, okay, on January 23, we're doing the kindergarten informational meeting. That's like a kindergarten roundup.
Oh.
To gather the 50-ish students who are going to be joining us for Dual Immersion for next school year. So that's an informational meeting. Then on January 30th, that's where we're going to have like a data chat about how kiddos are doing in Dual Immersion.
That's cute.
And then we'll share out what the plans are for the next three, four months with meetings too. So meetings are going to start ramping up again.
Awesome. And it certainly seemed like based on the TKK meeting that we could have our, a separate by itself owned meeting just about that. Because there were so many, I mean, that was like the, that and vaccines were the two, to the big, the two big questions and which is wonderful.
And I think unfortunately, it's just been a communication gap on our part.
Sure.
That we were not more proactive in sharing it. So this is the plan.
Great. Well, and I think moving forward, the more proactive we can be, it sounds like we have all of the information and now it's just time to disseminate it.
Thank you. So I mentioned earlier, you know, it's called out pretty early in the master plan, this kind of graph that we're lines crossed, right? In terms of our English language learners that are Spanish-speaking versus Armenian-speaking. And so I understand that materials are an issue and I believe that that's probably even more pronounced in Armenian. Can you just talk, like, how did you wrestle with that as a committee essentially as you were thinking about the master plan that like, things have changed since we started the Spanish immersion program, which is oversubscribed is my understanding and people are really interested in it. And like I personally, we have benefited from it and we love it with this idea that like we have all of these English learners that we aren't actually trying to serve with a similar program.
Yes, we didn't actually really grapple with it on the committee. We talked about it. We talked about the desire to have more than just Spanish. We don't have the physical classroom space for it. We don't have enough teachers who have, I think there is one university in all of California that offers preparation for the BCLAD in Armenian. And luckily it's CSUN, so it's local. Yay. But go Matadors. They, it would be, we, it wasn't really addressed because it seemed very overwhelming and would have to be addressed in a different, like we'd have and would have to be addressed in a different, like, we'd have to do more research first before we could even bring anything to the committee. So we did talk about the fact that it used to be in Spanish was like 50% of the population of English learners and now it's 25%. So how that's affected the Spanish dual immersion is it's really difficult to have, to find the half of the class that is fluent in Spanish.
And I actually have a question about that. Because it mentions in the plan, like that there's an assessment done for those students. Can you talk a little bit about what that actually looks like? Because I got feedback about that when I was running for school board, that people felt like, you know, my, my child can speak fluent Spanish, but he's, he or she is four or five and they aren't going to go speak fluent Spanish to a stranger. And that didn't seem like a super kind of age appropriate way to assess. So I'm curious what that assessment actually looks like? If that's the issue that we're facing is filling that side of the class.
Well, it would be the same then at any district. Because they would have, kids would be coming in and having a stranger basically talking to them. So the assessment, so I know, but I know what you want to know about what the assessment looks like, but you were also saying that it's like, is it that, is that the most appropriate way? So the assessment is first they come in and after I chit chat with them, I, and I happen to speak Spanish well, but I speak it slowly. And native speakers like can out race me, then I catch up to them. But sometimes the students come in with, they can understand. But they're understanding Spanish, like pick up your clothes, time to do homework, time to eat. It's like those basic, not basic, but it's the communication that they live with every day. So on the assessment, I'm doing a Simon Says thing and I'm like asking them to do certain things. And they are looking at me like, ooh, I don't know the name for that. I know I've been in preschool, for example, in English. So I know that that's a pencil, but you're calling it a lapis? Hmm. So there's just some, there's a disconnect there. Then they are provided with pictures and asked, like, what is, what are different parts of the body called? Your basic body parts? They're all very age appropriate. And well, I'm just thinking like, like elbow, wrist, knee, those words for students who are four years old, they may not know that, but that's
In either language.
Correct, in either language. But luckily it's scaled differently. It's scored differently if they're younger. So it's scored differently. There's pictures, there's, then they have to listen to a story. And then they have to retell the story. And if they kind of zoned out a little bit on the story, I read it to them again. And again, picture support there. So students who are very comfortable and speak in Spanish a lot just are fine. They do well on the test. Our population tends to be, of Spanish speakers is not really immigrant. If you look at our immigrant numbers, they're coming from Armenia and Russia. So we have a lot of second, third, fourth generation. And so the students understand some. They speak a few familiar words. But are they, do they know the enough academic or school type language to be a model in a dual immersion classroom? No, because we are, no, according to our assessment.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Aga Khanian has a question.
So the challenge with, I can tell you that what I've heard from challenges for Armenian, it's dual, sorry, it's late at night. Dual immersion is that finding also qualified teachers. Because my question is like, at least I can tell you, growing up even in Iran, when we took Armenian, it was really a conversation. We didn't, I don't know how to pronounce like scientific terminology, mathematics. A lot of parents are saying, we just want our students to learn the conversation fat part of it. So is there talk about that? Because it makes it easy. Because for a lot of parents, including myself, I don't know these terms. It's difficult. I know what the program was designed to, and you have to learn all these terminologies so the parents can. But is there talks about just having conversational?
There are different ELD programs and one of them is called a heritage language program, which wouldn't be, your, your end goal isn't focused on like being biliterate. It would be more of the conversational and stuff. However, in order to have like a dual immersion program and having a credentialed teacher, it's different than offering it as like, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank on what we would call it. Not extracurricular, but
Elective.
Like an elective or enhanced curriculum or enhanced enrichment. Thank you. Yeah, something for enrichment. And no, we've not talked about that. But if you'd like us to talk about that, we can talk about that. That's not a problem.
I mean, that's a, that's a conversation. Because I can tell you, a lot of parents would take their kids to just Armenian school. It's even over there, they're not learning. These private schools, they're not learning science or mathematics in Armenian. They're learning it in English. It's mostly conversational. It's really the, and then you add the history part of it, which is
At the district level, we've been having discussion about offering Armenian as part of our dual immersion program for years. And the obstacle is that if it's going to be truly a dual immersion program, we need to have certificated teachers that are qualified to teach it. And those are like unicorns. Can't find them.
So, but again, this has come up many times. Is there talks about offering dual immersion where it's not, you know?
We do, we do offer enrichment, though, like at Miller as an example. Armenian school, Jefferson has had Armenian school. So they're addressing part of what you're suggesting, too, is having that opportunity to go ahead and, and develop their oral language skills and their listening skills in Armenian. So we do offer.
What about Mandarin? Are we talking about that yet or not?
I've talked about it.
Yes, I will support that.
I think we should focus in on really getting our Spanish dual immersion program going. And then, because I think, you know, all of these are wonderful ideas, but if we can't find the teachers to do it.
And to teach at the California state standards.
Right, right. But obviously there's a need for all of those languages.
Yes.
But I also, so if the issue is, so it's one thing if the issue is curricular materials. And I feel like, you know, I feel like we've got adequate, if not great, materials on the Spanish side, right? But if the issue is really making sure that teachers have the right credential, like, is there not a way that we could like wave a magic wand? Is there a way for us to support teachers in getting those credentials if they're otherwise qualified? Right? Like if they, if they know, if they're fluent in Spanish and it's really getting, you know, taking some tests and maybe taking a course? Like, what's the financial commitment for us to do something like that? If it meant that we could add an extra classroom of DI at every grade?
I, I understand what you're saying. And we've been in communication this year specifically with the introduction from Dr. Aga Khanian with some members of the ANC. And they have been trying to partner with us to say, just tell us what the criteria is and we'll help you find the people that are willing to go and do that. So those, those conversations have started this year, actually in the fall. And we're still engaged in that to try to figure out how we can find a solution.
What about for Spanish?
We can definitely look into that for sure.
And you know, the other challenges, like, like Ms. Goldenberg was saying, is school space. So we were going to need six, seven classrooms at a school site. And so over, let's just say at Miller and Jefferson, which might house like an Armenian strand for dual immersion, we have to have six, seven classrooms for that, which we could do, but some students might be displaced. And, you know, if we're willing to do that, that's another, you know, opportunity to talk about it.
Brings up enrollment. Along those lines of a test or something for someone who's fluent in a language to get a credential to teach, there's some criteria out there, I think, Sarah, where if you've taken some additional classes, like I could be a history teacher because I have, you know, 18 credits, right? So the same principle would apply for this.
For the B clad? I'm not sure.
Don't, doesn't everybody have to have a B clad?
Everyone has to have the clad.
Clad.
But it's three classes for clad, I believe, or three tests. And then it's an additional three for the B clad.
Got it. So many hoops to jump through. Okay.
There are, and it's, the tests are, I mean, if they're paying for it themselves, it's like around $1,000 for all of the tests altogether. Laco does offer courses for them to prepare them for the classes. Yeah, it's, it's hard to find the teachers who, like at the end of the day, the, one of the teachers was saying yesterday, wow, we have $1,500 for the year as our like stipend or whatever for having a B clad. That's it. And LA Unified, it's 3,000.
It's also $26,000 at LA Unified per kid.
Yeah, it's, I know.
That's a big chunk.
It's huge.
And I'm sorry, Jen. I didn't mean to be rude, but
No, I get it. I get it. And I, and I had to, and I told them, you know, we're a medium size, small to medium sized district. Our funding is different. We don't have concentration grants. Like I, I know that stuff, so I do explain it to them when they say that. Yes, so it's, there's challenges and I would love to talk, not at 10:30 at night, with people if they want to talk about other ways to recruit and retain teachers to incentivize or whatever. I'm totally up for that. Are there any other questions, though, specifically about the master plan?
Uh, I don't think so. Thank you. Thank you both. Much appreciated. Okay, we're going to move on to 11E, adoption of the proposed 2024-2025 instructional calendar. Can I get a motion in a second?
Madam Chair, I move that we move with the Human Resources Service recommendation that Board of Education adopts proposed 2024-25 instructional calendars as presented.
Can I get a second? Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Tabit. Any conversation?
Hi.
I have one, too.
Okay, cool. Uh, I'm trying to find my notes here. So I sent a note to staff earlier today about the calendar. And just trying to understand, I understand there's a historical kind of tendency to finish before Memorial Day. That also means that we then start very early in August. You know, I looked at some of the other districts kind of around us and with similar demographics. LUSD starts the same day, but they have additional instructional days and a lot of additional vacation days that they take, so they go quite late. They're the only district that starts as early as we do. I disagree on the, that there's no fiscal impact to this. Given the amount that we spend on air conditioning our buildings in the heat of August, that we would not spend in June or late May. It just, uh, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't love it. I also don't love that we didn't include, that we're saying for Armenian genocide remembrance day that it's not on the official calendar as being a full holiday, that we're asking staff to use their floating holidays because that doesn't actually apply to our, the rest of our families in the district. When I imagine that that's a day with pretty low ADA across the district. Those are my thoughts on the calendar.
In addition, though, historically, sorry, I jumped in.
No, I was just going to add, ask just a clarifying question, which is, so your suggestion would be to start later and get out later? Being a little reductive.
But you also have to remember ending the semester prior to winter break.
Which you can, like, that's not a requirement, though.
No, but it's nicer.
It is nicer. It's 100% nicer for secondary students, who are the only ones that are on a semester schedule. I also wonder how like any other sort of changes at the secondary level from a block scheduling perspective or other things might impact that, right? I get that it's not ideal to come back and take your finals in January.
It's really rough.
It's really rough.
Are there, are there electives that rotate in elementary where, you know, they, you do like one thing before and then another thing after? I don't think so. Okay. So it is really just a sec, I mean, I, I think that like, well, Ms. Tabit, you go, because you had something.
That's what, that's what I was going to say. It's more, the, the point is to finish prior to winter break.
I mean, I think it's tough, right? Because there is a fiscal argument to be made about that. But I mean, and perhaps I am deeply biased here, but I can't imagine coming back from break and having my students have any kind of headspace to take any kind of final or cumulative. Like, they, they literally don't even remember what I talked to them about two weeks before that. No, no, go ahead, go ahead, please.
No, I, so I totally understand that. I also think like all of these other districts are doing it. So it might be worth seeing what the, like, understanding what the research is around that academic impact.
Are they ending, so you're saying they end?
They end later.
No, 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 that part I get. But like, are you saying that those districts have kids come back and then take finals?
I think so.
LA USD has a three week winter break and a two week spring break. So that's an extra two weeks that they have to go on.
Glendale starts August 21st. South Pasadena starts August 14th. Pasadena Unified starts August 19th. Last year, Beverly Hills started August 14th. So like just, they were doing like half, half weeks.
Does it say in there, like, does the semester end and then they go to?
I don't know this now. I should have pulled that when I was looking at them, but
And what about?
Well, now that you've named them, we can go and pull that and we'll figure that out.
I think it's worth looking at. I just think that the impact as for secondary teachers is going to be. And I also, I also wonder on some level, too, does it have any athletic implications for teams? I mean, I think your point is really, is very well taken in regards to like, and, and hopefully we can, you know, get some money to fix our HVAC and, but yeah.
Well, it's fiscal, but it's also, I mean, going to school sites that first week of school, it was a lot of, you can't do anything outside because it's 95, 100 degrees outside or really sweaty little kids running around that I was worried they were going to die of heat stroke, right? And staff.
We also just don't know, though, with, with climate change, too. Like, is that going to be what our September is like, too?
Right, but that hopefully will not be what our June is like or late May. That's pretty, pretty predictably, at least a little bit cooler than August, September.
So this has generated a lot of conversation. For example, at lunch today, all we talked about was the instructional calendar and we will continue to talk about that. There are certain pieces that we need to research. For example, instructional minute, there are a certain amount of instructional minutes that are required. And we know what that is. And contractually, we go 5,000 minutes over that. And, and that's a safety measure. What we were talking about is, okay, so if we can go by instructional minutes, does that mean we can lengthen the day? Or does it have to be 180 school days? So not that we would want to do that, but there's different variables to try to figure that out. In addition, we are not there yet, but there's the potential at the end of the year that we will have at least one high school who may be able to, through contractual language, go to a bell schedule. So we're, we're block schedule. So we, we have those things that are moving forward that forces to kind of look at this topic anyway. So we'll just do the research and bring back some information. Let me just give you an example. 10 years ago, we went through a very lengthy process to try to change to block scheduling and we just couldn't cross the hurdle with the union. But there's a lot of support for that this year and, and they're working on that at Burrows. I don't know where they're going to end up. I don't know where they're going to land. But we do have language about changing the bell schedule. And if they can pass through all the hoops, then there's a potential for that, at least at one of our schools.
With this conversation, then, do we table this to, until we can get some more information? Do we need, I mean, do we have to vote? Like, what's, is there a timeline we have to meet?
So, so the, the dynamic here is that we have a committee that is structured with certain body members, BTA, parents, CSEA. And the calendar that we are bringing forward is the calendar that the committee has come to consensus on and voted on. So what we're bringing forward is the work of that committee and looking at start times, end times, holidays, number of days in the fall, number of days in the spring. This is what the committee has come forward with. I'm not sure that I can go, it's not a timing issue. I'd have to go back to them and say, we want you to reconsider. And they'd have to come to consensus on that before I can bring it back.
We could approve it now and if it decides to be changed, it could be amended.
I mean, that's fine with me. The only question I have is something that we had talked about. I don't know if it's a separate document, but we had talked about something that lists the major hall. something that lists the major holidays, uh whether it's Ramadan, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, just so people are aware and can either. And I know we ran into this problem this last year, like which days there cannot be sports practice, even though I know we've been doing it for fifteen years and everyone acts like we haven't been doing it for fifteen years. But I think the, if we can list it somewhere on this, either like a second page or the back or whatever, I don't know, I know we have it somewhere.
We definitely have it for the Jewish holidays.
I, I also think it'd be really important to add Ramadan and some other, especially because Ramadan is a fasting holiday and that's really gonna impact student performance um in attention. And, and also too, just making sure, even if it's a separate calendar, our athletic departments know when we're not allowing practice and also for um specific Armenian holidays as well, like we should. It should, I mean, look, I'm all for all the Jewish holidays being on there, but it really should be other substantial days that we know impact a majority of our student population.
So that, that's totally fine and we can do that. What, what I was trying to communicate and I don't think I was very clear is we, the, the Jewish holidays, we have them listed, but more importantly, we have it figured out. What days can you practice, what days can you not practice? We don't have that for all the other holidays, so that's something we have to work on.
I, I would love it, I mean, and again, I'm not advocating that we cancel practice, I think I'm just advocating that we're mindful of that, especially for kids who may be fasting all day. Um is the first thing that comes to my head, so I don't think that impacts like a vote on this. It was just more of something that I, we've talked about in the past and you did make yourself clear. Uh okay, any more conversation? Okay, um all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. I guess it carries, two, one. It's a weird, three, one, I don't know who anybody is anymore. Three, one, um there you go, as presented, with the possibility of an amendment coming down the pike. Um, okay. Beep, boop, 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 boop. Eleven F, amended memorandum of understanding between BTA and BUSD regarding DEI lead teacher compensation at sites, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Agakanyan.
My, I moved that the Burbank Teachers Association and the Burbank Unified School District. Oh wait. The, the Board of Education amend the memorandum of understanding between the Burbank Teachers Association and the Burbank Unified School District regarding compensation for the diversity, equity and inclusion lead teachers as, at sites as presented, sorry.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Agakanyan, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, any discussion?
Yes, I got a couple of questions. Can we get a report on the work for school site that these folks are doing?
No, that was, I mean.
No.
Ms. Tabit, just so you're aware, something that I've asked uh Dr. Paramo to do is to schedule some time to sit down with Dr. Macias, we really need to have a, it's not because I have any doubt that the teachers are doing the work, but we have, I mean, there are very specific requirements listed in this document and we just don't have information. So we need a report on what's being done, what the sites need, all of that good stuff, because there, I believe there are also still some schools that maybe don't even have DEI teacher leaders, so we need like, I think we need a much more comprehensive overview of this role, its impact, what kind of support is needed, what kind of adjustment need, adjustments need to be made, I mean, this is something I advocated for strongly. So I'm super invested in it being done in an effective and useful way, not just something we create and then nothing happens.
Right, and that's.
I, I totally agree, uh what I would say is we've been kind of limping around.
Yeah.
Uh we just got uh Oscar on board, Dr. Macias on board on uh January eighth and he is our official DEI person, so we will get on it right away.
And, and then a second clarifying question, this change is based on the contract and the raise we gave, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Any other conver- sweet. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion carries four, zero, thank you, friends. Eleven G, approval of Williams lawsuit settlement quarterly report on uniform complaint twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion in a second?
Sure, I'll help you out.
Thank you, friend.
You're welcome, I moved that the Board of, blah, sorry.
It's a million o'clock.
Are we on eleven G, is that?
We are.
Thank you. Uh I moved that the Board of Education approved the Williams lawsuit settlement quarterly report on uniform complaints twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Report summary number two, October first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamclerk. Any conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero. We have uh polled eleven H. Too bad. Eleven I, approval of school sites twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school plans for student achievement.
Madam Chair, I moved that the Board of Education approved the school sites twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school plans for student's achievement as presented.
Moved by Dr. Agakanyan, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, any conversation? Ms. Ponsor Kamkar.
I would just encourage our parent communities and PTAs to review these plans.
Yes.
There's clearly a lot of work that went into these.
Yes.
Um and I would love to see these be shared with our wider school communities.
Yeah, absolutely, there is a link and you can go cut and paste it and it's all the different school plans, really informative. Thank you for that. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nope, seeing none, motion carries four, zero. Eleven J has been removed. Moving to eleven K, acceptance of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual fiscal report and financial and performance audits of Prop thirty-nine, general obligation bond building fund measure S program.
So moved.
See, we can do that. Perfect. Moved by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, seconded by Ms. Tabit, I'm into this, this is what we should be doing from now on.
Repeating ourselves, thank you.
That, thanks to Mr. Cantwell. Okay, any conversation?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries four, zero. Eleven L, amendment to certificated salary schedules. Can I have a motion in a second? Dr. Agakanyan moves.
So seconded.
So seconded, Ms. Tabit seconds, any conversation? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. Okay. Excuse me. I didn't mean it. Did I cough on you?
No, you're fine.
Oh, thank God. Eleven M.
Can I request that we read this one and then?
Absolutely.
Because.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Approval of the Chuck Lorre Family Foundation Music Grant Program Agreement.
I move that the Board of Education approved the Chuck Lorre Family Foundation Music Grant agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the Chuck Lorre Family Foundations effective January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to accept an award amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that authority to sign the agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR AG two, four, a whole bunch of zeros, one, eight, seven, as presented.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan, uh a humongous thank you. A humongous, giant, enormous thank you to the Chuck Lorre Family Foundation. I assume we send them some sort of giant thank you balloon, animals or certificate or something, just. Yeah, we should do one of those certificates. Fantastic.
This is probably the fourth or fifth year that they've been a outstanding contributor, so.
Madam Chair, I, I had a, you know, we had spoken in the past about acknowledging our donors and supporters.
Yes.
Is it possible if we can invite them over and give them a certificate?
Then it won't get done.
We, we've already been planning it with staff, I think the discrepancy is when the board wants that to occur. We thought it should happen in June, but I think that you wanted it to happen sooner, so I just, I'll take direction on when you want that to, to occur.
Let's continue the conversation, it could be interesting if we could feature some of the kids who've benefited from this fabulous generosity? Or like play something. Um okay, uh enthusiastic, all those who uh the, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Zero opposition, motion carries gratefully four, zero. A, consent agenda time.
Madam Chair, I moved that the Board of Education approves consent items twelve, eight, twelve, twelve, um.
Oh.
Oh, as presented.
Moved by Dr. Agakanyan, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Kamkar, any conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries four, zero. Please hold, flipping, flipping, flipping. We're, uh, I'm gonna read in the, our retirements, as we have no uh public comment, because we condensed. Uh we have two retirements this evening, we want to thank them both for their fantastic service and many years of service to the district. Uh Cynthia Burton and Karen Watland. Thank you to both of you for everything you've given to BUSD. We are adjourning the meeting in honor of Edik Agakani at ten fifty PM.